Sharon, you can call the roll.
No.
You're not muted, but it says you're not on mute, but I can't hear you. Maybe you're muted on your end.
Council member Wenger?
Here.
Council member Richards?
Here.
Council member Hughes?
Here.
Vice Mayor Derwin?
Here.
Mayor Alves?
Here. Okay. Okay, I will start with, we'll start with oral communication, a couple of things. Couple of changes. Item. Sorry, item seven is going to be continued. The advisory board wanted a little more time to review some documents. We will not be discussing item seven on the regular agenda. Item three on the consent agenda, the conflict of interest code, will be moved to regular agenda. With that, we'll take oral communications. I'll remind everyone that oral communicate or public communications are limited to three minutes. And to please respect our decorum policy. No, no name calling, nothing personal. Address your comments to the full council and please. For specific, not, no personal tax, please. Okay, if anyone wants to comment, I see Rita's hand up. Rita, please go ahead.
Well, tonight I've got two compliments. First of all, thank you for moving item number three to the regular agenda. Because I think it's important that people understand why those changes were made last month and this month. And I also want to say thank you because the minutes actually have the names of the people that are online. You know, when we have it in person at the schoolhouse, it's nice to look around the room at the neighbors or glance at the list and people signed in. So thank you for adding that to the minutes. It's, it's very important to everyone, even if they don't say it to you. But thank you for that.
Thank you. And Nan Shostak, go ahead.
Hold on, Nan. There you go.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, hi. Yeah, this is comment on the budget, but I'd like to get it in right now. I may not be able to stay too long.
Mr. Chair, through the chair, we really should take comments related to the budget during the budget hearings.
If I may, hello?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I was having great difficult, I'm concerned about fire safety, as you know, and safety for, you know, other natural disasters. And looking through the budget, the new budget, it's just, it's a matter of formatting, probably. Having, I was having great difficulty piecing together the pieces for fire safety. So that's one comment. Another thing is, I would, I've been thinking about this for a while. I think we really need a top-down, comprehensive, long-term approach to preparing for natural disasters and avoiding them. I don't think we're doing that right now. It's more year to year. And, you know, given the, you know, the CZU fire and the the near involvement of the town in the fire. I would really like for us to think very, very carefully about priorities for the town and to reflect those in the budget. That's not for today, but that's a, that's a longer term. This is a longer term item. And I think it's now's the time to get started.
Okay, thank you. I see Kristi Corley's hand up. Go ahead, Kristi.
Hold on just a moment. There you go, Kristi.
Mute. Okay. Looking at the total, looking at the total property assessment of the town, the budget items for fire protection.
Kristi, if this is about the budget, it has to wait till the budget. I let Nan talk because she said she had to leave early, but if this is about the budget, you have to wait till the budget section discussion, please.
I may need to leave early, too.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so looking at the total property assessment of the town, the budget items for fire protection seem low to me. And I just want to say that as a comment. And then what are our priorities for fire protection? And do we have long-term goals based on what we just went through with a fire today, a fire on September 3rd, and then the other lightning fires on the ridge?
Okay, thank you. Okay, any more public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will move on to the consent agenda. Believe the minutes are being polled already. Does anyone need to poll? So the minute number one is polled, number three is polled. That leaves two, four, five, and six. Are there any other items anyone would like to poll? Okay, then I could take a motion on items two, four, five, and six.
Move and approve.
Well, second.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Craig. Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Council member Richards?
Aye.
Council member Hughes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Derwin?
Aye.
Mayor Alves?
Aye.
Think you missed Council.
I think you missed Sharon, I didn't hear my name.
Okay, I did call, but.
You were muted, we couldn't hear it, sorry.
Yes or no?
I still didn't hear it, but aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Okay. Okay, minutes. Jeremy, I know you had a correction.
Yeah, one correction for an email I received earlier today. The bottom of red page four. The last paragraph, it should read Rita C O M E S to match the correct spelling of her name in attendees above. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other corrections of the minutes? Then I could take a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Craig, seconded by Ann this time. Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Council member Wenger?
Aye.
Council member Richards?
Aye.
Council member Hughes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Derwin?
Aye.
Mayor Alves?
Aye. Okay, item one passes. Okay, so item three is the update of our conflict of interest code. I believe Jeremy was going to start on this one.
I'll make a very brief presentation and then if Cara has any further comments, please join in. So this is, just as it says, an update to the town's current conflict of interest code. We have modified it in the past. The last modification was December 2nd, 2018. This is a very slight amendment to the, the code. It adds an assisted planner position, which wasn't part of the town's job descriptions at the time this was last written. Otherwise, it's the same exact code of, excuse me, conflict of interest code. And we do this regularly. Cara, is there anything to add?
I think you've covered it, Jeremy. The, the only thing I would add is that the state requires local agencies to review their conflict of interest codes every two years. And that's primarily to determine whether there have been any new positions added to the organization that the town council would like to see have reporting obligations. And so this year, there was a new position that was added. And so that's why we are amending the code this particular cycle. Thank you, happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone from the council have any questions on this one? Craig, go ahead.
It's less a comment and more a technical correction. I think there's a typo on the table at the bottom of red page 21. It says, member of the architectural site control committee, and they are a commission, not a committee. So I thought we should change that.
Oh, yeah.
I think we missed it and it was incorrect in 2018. And so it got the typo copied over this year, but we might as well correct it now.
Good catch, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, Rita, go ahead.
Hold on, Rita.
Hi, my, my question is that last month, the sheet looked a little bit different. And now this month, it's updated. And my real question about this disclosure form is why certain groups need to disclose more and other groups don't. I was trying to search, I know the town council has to do the 700 forms, but I was looking for the sheet, the state sheet that says, if you're in this category, you have to do this. If you're in that category, you have to do that. Maybe somebody can send that to me, but I think it'd be good for other people to be able to see what that difference is, more than just what's on here, you know, category one, category two. Maybe the, our attorney can say what that difference is.
Cara, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So the state has a requirement that only applies to certain categories. And so the state required categories are listed in the table in the resolution in the column listed as designated positions. And that includes all of the town council members, all members of the planning commission, and the town manager and town attorney. So those positions by, under state law, must file a complete Form 700. A Form 700 includes disclosure of all sources of income received from any, any source, including real property, income, investment income, salaries, personal savings accounts, those types of things. There are a series of exceptions, such as income from mutual funds are exempt from disclosure. But under state law, all, all sources of income should be disclosed by those particular categories. Then state law also says that each individual council can decide whether to list additional positions and require that additional commission members or committee members or staff submit additional disclosures. And that is at the discretion of the council. And so this council historically has certain commissions and certain council, staff members disclose various sources of income. And that those categories are listed under other locally designated officials. And a couple of years ago, it used to be that, that everybody under that category would have to fill out a complete for, a complete Form 700. And more recently, cities in general have been thinking that that is not necessary. Really, the only sources of income that a council is concerned about are the sources of income that would affect the decision-making authority in the town. And so as a result, more, I think, more cities have been revising the disclosure categories to focus in on the particular sources of income that could impact decision-makers making decisions in the town. And so that's why we have updated this, this disclosure category chart to to more closely align with that philosophy of just focusing on, on local sources of income. I hope that answers your question.
Rusty's got his hand up, go ahead, Rusty.
Thank you. I have four questions. First question is, given the state requirement to update the code every two years, why isn't this done pursuant to a notice public hearing? So that the public has an opportunity to hear and comment on this in advance. Second question is, if I understand your answer about the scope of the disclosure, the, that is, who's affected by the disclosure. Note that the, there are certain designated entities that must disclose. And then you indicate that the council has discretion to determine what other bodies. But that discretion, as I understand, under state law is not unbounded. Entities that exercise essentially final decision-making or adjudicatory authority are required to fall under category one and make a full disclosure, which would seem to include, given the state definition of that obligation, the ASCC. And I noticed in the revision that was posted two weeks ago, the ASCC was included as a category one entity. And now it's been moved back to a category two entity. So I wish you, if you could speak to that. And then the third, and I'll, I'll end with this last question, has to do with the disclosure obligation under category one. As I understand it, and you, you mentioned this, but I'd like a fuller explanation, if you could provide it, please. Under category one, the town council, planning commission are required, among other things, to disclose their sources of income. And you seem to indicate that the town has authority or discretion to limit that disclosure. I'd like to know exactly what that limitation is, when it was approved, if it was done subject to a notice public hearing, and what the wording of that limitation is, so that we can understand what income sources, entities or officials must disclose and which ones they're not disclosing. Thank you.
Cara, do you want to address that?
Sure, I'm happy to. And thank you for those questions. This, the, these disclosure requirements are very important requirements in terms of transparency and open government. We do take them seriously. So the state law governs the procedures for adopting a local conflict of interest resolution. They do not, the state law does not require a notice public hearing. There's not that much difference between a noticed public hearing and just a public hearing that we conduct here at town council. The, the difference with a noticed public hearing is that you typically have those with respect to development applications. And there's a requirement that property owners within a certain radius of a project receive a written letter or notice of the development application. In this case, there really isn't a radius issue. So it, I, people generally receive notice of, of the town council meetings by, you know, looking up the agenda. And this item is, is posted on, on the agenda. With respect to ASCC members, the state law specifically designates the planning commission. It does not specify final decision-makers. So under state law, only the planning commission is legally required to, to file a Form 700. But the town council has expanded the state law's requirement, as, as we previously mentioned, and has included ASCC members as well. And, and that is because ASCC members do have final decision-making authority in certain situations. And so the council thought that it was appropriate for such members to, to file disclosure requirements. With respect to the discretion that the council has, all mandatory filers have to comply with state law. Beyond that, the, the council is well within its discretion to, to impose additional requirements on committee members and staff members. And, and they have done that through these, through the years by the, the resolutions. And then with respect to your last question, which was category one disclosures, I didn't completely follow your, your question. The, the descriptions of the different categories are listed in the resolution. And so the, I, I think he wanted to know what was included in category one. And that's listed in the resolution. If you don't have it, you know, we can certainly provide that to you. The description of categories two and three are also limited, are also listed in, in the resolution. Thank you.
Through the chair, the reason that there was a change from the last meeting to this meeting was that we inadvertently used a previous version of the template, if you will, of the disclosures, the one that was changed in 2018. That's why we pulled the item last meeting in order to reflect what we had actually done in 2018.
Rusty, if you have more detailed questions, I would suggest you contact Jeremy or, or Cara directly. And you could make a comment at a future meeting if you have more comments on this. That'd be my, my suggestion on this. Okay. Okay, we, we need to approve this. Any further discussion on this? Does anyone care to make a motion to approve?
Happy to make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Mary Ann, seconded by Craig. Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Council member Wenger?
Aye.
Council member Richards?
Aye.
Council member Hughes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Derwin?
Aye.
Mayor Alves?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. That moves us on to item eight, report by the town manager and subcommittee on the revised budget. Jeremy, go ahead. Sorry, item seven again was, was polled, will be placed in a future agenda. So we're on item eight, and Jeremy, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor Alves, members of the council. We're really quite proud to be able to present to you tonight the proposed revised budget in the format that we'll describe later, that the town council asked us to put future budgets in. So let me share my screen. And we do have a PowerPoint that Cindy and I are going to tag team. You can see my screen? All right. So the overview for tonight is the following. We want to describe how we got here and the timeline of how we got here, provide summary and detail to the revised budget, and also share the, the items that came up at the finance committee last Thursday. They're both going to be detailed here, and they're also detailed in the transmittal staff report. So as you know, the budget is typically begun as early as January as we have a set of conversations with committees on their budgets and begin a process of developing a council priority for the upcoming year, which helps inform the preparation of the budget. This year, that process was completely turned over by COVID. The week that the town shut down was the week that managers were beginning to put their numbers in the Open Gov system. Things sort of stopped for about six to eight weeks there. And by the time that we were all coming back online in a way that was cogent, we made a recommendation to the council that in lieu of developing a budget that would likely have a set of numbers, both on the revenue and expenditure side, that were simply incorrect, that we roll over the budget from FY 1920. We called it the interim budget. That's what the council did in June. The development of this budget was quite a process because we are using two systems. We're using the old fund balance system, which we have still kept activated because of data that it includes and the preparation of the final actions from last year. We also are using Open Gov completely now for both budget preparation, but also for our accounting. This process was very quick. As I mentioned, we start informally as early as January, but formally, we start in March. This year, our budget process took less than two months. Approximately two months. Here's the schedule that we used this summer to get to this point. These are very similar bullets that you would see in a, in a normal budget process spread over more months. So I think the first thing that people recognized or noticed was that the budget had a new look. You can see here, it really was a total change to what had been presented in the past. And the rationale behind this change was primarily making the document more accessible and transparent to the public. In particular, producing a list of true departments that I'll get into in a moment. Departments for most laypeople are things like planning and building, public works and the like. And that's not what we had historically used. So this is, maybe the last time you'll see this in a presentation from us. This is what the budget used to look like. This is actually a department level view. The department was permits and fees, which you can already see is a bit confusing because permits and fees could go to different places. This one did mostly go to planning and building. On the expenditure side, sorry, it's a little stretched. This is consultant services and other departments. This clearly was in various, various different departments and actuality. And included items that actually go across departments. It's a term that we call non-departmental. So I'd like to take you to, this will let me do it, to the budget. So this is the stories view. This is a view that will be made more and more available to the public. It allows the public to take a look at the detail of the budget. We can also construct stories and displays that go beyond the way the budget's currently constructed. So for instance, if someone wanted to have a very specific view on a couple of different kinds of revenue sources, if they wanted to look at just all restricted funds, we can produce that. Wouldn't necessarily produce it for a normal budget. So for those who are not familiar with it, I'll, I'll take you on a quick tour. And I'm going down to our planning and building department. So the department has its own master view with a description of what the department does. All of these were put together with the leads from the departments who are all joining us tonight and will be available for, for questions. We have a summary of the department in revenue expense form, which I think is pretty standard. And you can see what things cost. The advantage of this format, which can cause staff angst, is that you can see that sometimes departments don't pay for themselves. That doesn't mean they're not functioning well. That doesn't mean that they're not meeting their obligations. That means that there are departments that don't necessarily generate revenue. A good example is actually administration. There is zero revenue in the administrative department. Planning is, planning and building is a place where a lot of revenue is generated because of what they do. Public Works is another place, you don't see a lot of revenue. So then you would go down to the, one of the divisions. So in this case, we're going to pick a planning division. This is what people think of current planning. So there's a quick summary of FTEs, its positions, and some charts. And these can be made all different ways. These are the ones that we showed, so we've got, shared something of the story. And then there's detail underneath. So this is true for all the departments, plus a non-departmental department. So I'll give examples of a couple of those. Non-departmental could be the town attorney. That's a function that crosses across departments. On the revenue side, it could be a revenue that supports multiple departments, such as property taxes. This is an area we made some changes to. We, on the left is the old terminology we use at the department level. Now we use a term called object level. So these are, I think, similar for revenue streams that you would be accustomed to in, in, in other municipal budgets. There's a couple new concepts here. The concepts around appropriated fund balance. We don't see here reserves or transfers, operating transfers in and out. That's to help balance the budget. We hadn't had balanced budgets before, but this shows how much general fund support, in this case, would come in to support creating the balance. So we were, obviously, we understood that there was going to be some impact from COVID. And what we saw. And what we saw in the spring and what we saw as we developed this budget were those impacts. Clearly impacts related to any kind of mass gathering, classes, events, use of, use of our fields. We did see increases though in revenue sources as people stayed at home, such as the utility users tax. That makes some sense because people were there and they were using their utilities. We had some initial expenditures at town hall to ensure that staff, when they are there, that they can work safely, like protective barriers. We also had to support staff in working from home. This was essentially all invented in about 90 days because we did not work from home prior to this. The council direction was fairly direct. Have a, have a budget that's a bit more modest, that creates some flexibility as it relates to uncertainty in the future. So we understood that to mean that departments where we could make appropriate operational cuts, we did that as much as we could. I also understood that direction, that it made sense to freeze colas for staff. And there are no colas in this budget. It's the first budget that I presented to the town that did not include a cola for the staff. So this is a summary of the revenue changes that are part of the revised budget. I think you can read them. A couple that require a little more information or detail. The garbage franchise fee was increased because we have a new contracted franchise agreement with green waste. The ERAF, which is Education Augmentation Fund. It, there's actually a bit of a spat with the state on allocations. And right now, this, the county is withholding about half of the amount that we typically get in advance of any resolution. We, we hope that the resolution provides us with what we typically get in ERAF. It's also worth noting that we've conservatively budgeted for ERAF in the past and what's budgeted now is, is again likely somewhat conservative. Expenditures. We made some modest changes in some of the departments. But we did have some increases in software, which is, can be the bane of our existence in some ways, but it's keeping us connected right now. We've had increases in janitorial service related to COVID-19. For positions, there was an associate senior planner position that was budgeted and supported by the council for the FY 1920 budget. We have not deleted that budget, but we have defunded it and we have spread some of the expense from that position into consultants that can support various activities very quickly for us. The explosion in permitting activities in the town since I've even been here is incredible. I think we've had every conditional use permit come or plan to come to council in the four years I've been here. And projects do take longer. So it's nice at this point to have a level of flexibility to deploy trained people very quickly to those discrete planning tasks and also get a little bit of savings. The finance department, the council has made it a priority to provide Cindy, who is now the full-time finance director with support. So we reflect that in her budget. And with that, I will turn it over to Cindy. Cindy, let me know when you want me to change slides.
Thank you. Will do. Hello. Good evening, council and members of the community. I wanted to go ahead and take you through a look at a summary here of our general fund operational budget at the, at the object level. With the revenue sources to the left and requirements to the right, total revenues come in at 5.7 million with gross appropriations at 5.6, resulting in a net operating surplus of 30,245. With that, there would be, it would be necessary to do an operational transfer from the general fund over to our transportation gas tax fund listed over to the right of 125,639. It would also be necessary to do a transfer from a general fund to capital in the amount of 386,740, which brings us to a total operating transfers of 512,379. This would then reduce our reserves by $482,134. And if you want to go ahead and go to the next slide. This, this look here will explain a little bit further on the required transfer operationally from general fund over to our gas tax fund. This, for this budget, this, this year's revised budget, we have a transfer, expected transfer of $125,639 to go ahead and balance out our budget. Historically, this is some, this is a transfer that has taken place every year. And as you could see significantly, every year, this amount has increased. And this is also due to the, the cancellation of the road tax that was eliminated back at the beginning of, when we're looking here at 2012, 2013. So every year, it has significantly increased. And this year, we are at the 1, 125. Next slide. In this look here, we have a summary, a breakdown of our capital improvement program. This year, we have a quite conservative and more modest program planned for our, our fiscal year 2020, 21, in a total of 386,740. What we've done this year is plan for our roads and right-of-way, our streets to, to look at just the design. We, we've budgeted and planned for the design of the projects and and looking at what, what streets we would be working on with the construction planned initially for into the new fiscal year 2021, 22. That's when the construction will begin. For this year's budget, we also have planned the project, two rapid flashing beacon projects. This was brought to us by the BPTS committee as well as the pavement management system update and the required annuals are, I think it's every two years, the speed survey that is mandated by law. We also have our open space program, a total of 75,005. This is to bring our town center open space improvements and maintenance as requested by the conservation committee with also some tree removals to mitigate some fire, potential fire risk. We also have a capital program planned for our facilities, a total of 101,900. This will be for various facility improvements, some software as well. We have planned a virtual EOC included in our, in our facilities plan as well. We took our proposed plan for the budget to the finance committee on September 17th. They had, they provided us with some feedback and suggestions. They were looking at, suggested to reduce the interest revenue that we currently had planned in the budget, which may be a little bit too aggressive, but we have seen some really good returns within our investments, specifically with Schwab. Leif is, is pretty flat, but the, the revenue has has been pretty significant with the Schwab account. They asked for additional information on the medical cost growth on our staff, specifically within the planning department. We're looking a little further into this, into this, this line item. But most significantly, we can see that some of this change happened with some transition within staffing at the time. We had a planning, the planning director who had departed from the town and then we did use some staff on an interim basis until we brought in a permanent planning director as well as our building inspector. At the time, we did not have a building inspector who also left the town. And then we do have some other, other issues listed in our, in our staff report. What we would like is some information and a direction by council in review of our operational budget as well as any feedback that can be provided for our gas tax and capital program as well as our fee schedule. Any, any feedback and suggestions that we can provide for our salary schedule. And then reviewing our utility users tax level, which is brought to as a ballot measure every four years and looking at what those adjustments may be. Currently, the the total UUT is six and a half percent. And as well as reviewing our fire budget and making any revisions to that, increasing the budget for a fire dependent on, on feedback on fire mitigation and preparedness.
Thank you, Cindy. Let me give a little more color to the final four bullet points. On an annual basis, the second public hearing for the budget, we make modifications to the fee schedule and the salary schedule based on CPI. And we wanted to get feedback from you tonight on whether or not either of those should occur. Obviously, a fee schedule, a CPI adjustment would increase the, all the fees in the town. The last CPI that I saw was just over 1%. So it would be modest, but it's a change. The salary schedule, we also, what we've done the last few years is move the range of the salary up by the CPI. So the high and low part of the range. If you remember, we had left for some years, the low range didn't move at all. So we had very wide ranges for salaries and they weren't realistic. So that's a second question. The UUT, as Cindy said, it's six and a half percent total. 2% is by voter approval that goes to the open space acquisition fund. The four and a half percent, council now has authority to tweak that amount up and down 1%. We left it flat. We thought that was appropriate, but we wanted to mention it if the council had different direction. And finally, we think this is a good idea. There are still a few items that are floating around in other budget units that relate to fire. In particular, the vegetation management monies of $122,000. We think it makes sense to put that in a fire budget. So people can have a better understanding of what we expend related to that need in town. So that concludes our presentation. We're open to answering any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, Cindy and Jim. Does any, does a council, well, does council have any questions specifically around the budget right now? Craig, go ahead.
I just had a question. It's really more about OpenGov and its capabilities. If we, if we or staff wanted to, or the public wanted to, is there a way in OpenGov to go through and drill sort of across all the various departments where such things might show up to sort of pull together a comprehensive look at, for example, fire, fire prevention stuff that we're doing. So pulling together what's listed as the fire department, which is a fairly small amount, whatever work may come out of the fire safety committee, things like the trail cleanup and open space cleanup. And is there a way to sort of easily? I don't know. I, I think of it as tagging something where you might have something to be in multiple categories by tagging it with sort of everything that that budget item might apply to, so you can pull it out and report on it lots of different ways? Or is that hard to do?
We will have the capability to do so. We have the option to create project codes within the OpenGov system. So we can, in essence, tag line items, budget items with a particular project code and then pull reporting data that will give us a full scope of what is included in that project.
But that, that would be something that a staff would probably have to do because unless you have that information, you wouldn't necessarily know which project codes to pull in to say, show me all the fire safety stuff.
Correct. Yes. So we could, at the staff level, could then at the, at the transaction level, list each of those transactions, whether they're expenditures or possibly revenue sources and tag them with, with this particular project code and then set up these reports that would be public facing and the public would be then, would then be able to review the, the transactional data as well as overall for the full project or for the full scope of work and review all the detailed information.
Thank you. Mary Ann's got her hand up. Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Thank you, Jeff. I think these are mostly for Jeremy. My first question is, we're defunding a position in planning, building, and we're hiring consultants. Can you explain why you think that's a good idea?
Sure. So the planning department, planning, building department, but planning in particular at this point, is grappling with a host of new types of projects that we haven't dealt with in the past on a regular basis and also more projects. Your standard single-family house tends to be taking a little bit longer. We unfortunately tend to have involvement, more of attorneys in that process than we've ever had before. And as I mentioned earlier, we have multiples conditional use permit projects, very large projects that go to planning, that go to ASC happening at the same time. And what going to a consultant at this time does, it does two things. One, it provides a level of flexibility in bringing in specified folks who have a, a skill set, who can work on those issues. So for instance, when Laura was out on her medical leave, we were able to bring in somebody on a five, six week basis to help move along portions of the Stanford project that were happening internally. The, she's just hired someone else who can work on both project level issues like COP issues and also single family residences. The second benefit, oh, and I should say too, that in the coming year, we're anticipating doing work on the housing element, general plan update issues and having access to that skill set in the very early stages is pretty useful. Secondly, it provides a little bit of savings as it relates to benefits for the position if we were to hire new.
Okay, thanks. My second question is the ERAF funds. Any idea when we will know if we will receive that?
If Cindy and Jim have heard something differently than I have, please speak up. But I've not heard that there's a resolution coming shortly.
Okay. My third question, there's an item for $103,817 for the sheriff. Is that there because it is part of the contract?
Correct. All the sheriff's contract and the dispatch contract both went up because the amounts went up because of the contracts that we have with them. That's active.
Fourth question, are you pursuing the TA grant with two rapid flashing beacons?
Yes, we submitted the grant on Friday.
Great. And then my last question is, Measure A and Measure W, which are both absent sales taxes, Measure M, which is a vehicle reg fee, I assume will be decreased funding sources. Is that factored into the budget?
Yes. Cindy, do you have anything you want to add to them?
We did include measures, the measures in the budget as the revenue sources, the expenditures. We have shifted those into reserves as we primarily use those for funding of the construction, the road construction project, which we have shifted the actual construction of the roads into the which we have shifted the actual construction of the roads into the budget for 2021, 22. So, so currently those revenues will be listed under reserves until we can use that funding for those expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
If I can give just a little more color to the, to the last comment too. And Cindy, you've said 2021, 22 twice and it, I, I, it took me a second or two to understand what you were saying and then I realized what it was. It was so confusing. So one of the benefits of shifting the construct, the road construction, annual road resurfacing project from the end of the fiscal year to the start of the next fiscal year is that we've historically always bumped up again against when those expenditures happen where they may fall in a fiscal year related to the audit. So we want to really clear that up. And secondly, instead of Howard making an educated guess on what the bid may look like nine months after he's put the numbers in the budget, this actually ties in very closely with the bid process. We can go out for the bid, we can get some actual numbers and put those into budget. So we think it's, it's a much tighter presentation. Thanks.
Ann or John, did you have any questions you wanted to, or, or comments? I know, I know, Ann, you were at the finance committee meeting that talked about this. Do you have anything to add to that from that?
Anyway, I have one sort of many comments, but I'm going to save all of those. But I do have one big question that gets right to the area that I still have a lot of difficulty in sort of figuring out exactly what, where we're spending what dollars? And that's the public works department. So I would take you into red page 183, which is where that starts. And what's really very, very difficult to tell is under this new format, and I understand it's departmental allocations, et cetera. But what actual projects we are undertaking within that group, given we are spending, it has some of the most enormous expenditures, obviously, in the, in the town in terms of the magnitude of the dollars. And you, you see it throughout this budget in terms of how it reflects itself and in the amount of funds we have to transfer from the general fund to support those efforts. And I know that we obviously lost our revenue source back when the road impact fees were discontinued. But that said, it's always been in my mind, the, the connection I've never been able to make adequately is what projects are we actually undertaking? That we're consistently having to fund at the level of very high levels and obviously increasing every year and bringing down our general fund reserves pretty dramatically, specifically for this area. So I want to understand it a little better relative to what the actual projects are that are going to be coming through that group in any given year.
Sure. So the public works, for the sake of simplicity, will say that there's two primary funding sources, general fund and then special funds. But in this case, I think it's the gas taxes is the most interesting of those because we, we haven't historically received enough gas tax to fund all of the activities in the gas tax bucket. So on red page 184, you can see that the public works department doesn't bring in much in the way of a little bit from recruitment permits and there's some monies for engineering fees and then monies that are part of the library donor fund. So these are general fund dollars, the expenses, you can see that the revised budget is $1.1 million. This is, all of this is out of the general fund. The projects, this is the same detail that, and we're happy to provide additional detail at future budgets that we provided in previous budget. So if I can take you down past employee costs to maintenance and utilities, these are buckets that we've had before and call them subunits here for a variety of services where you can see that there's been some increases include janitorial services I described earlier related to COVID costs. We have the, those crews out much more. And then in the services and supplies, the fuel engineer is the primary significant change here. This is the vegetation management right of way work that's been going on for a year or so. So that's a big amount. There's also in landscaping services and supplies in an increase. That increase is primarily due to a recommendation from our insurer. The redwood trees that are outside of town hall, they do drop dead, large dead branches and our insurer suggested that we do some significant work to reduce those drops. And that's really expensive, unfortunately. So that's, those are the two primary cost drivers for that budget unit there. Budget subunit services and supplies, no change in education and travel. And then if you go to red page 185, this is the, the special funds. And where, if you go to expenses, you can see what we spend these special funds on and there's a delta there that requires a transfer. So these are activities that are associated with the right of way primarily. So maintaining our right of way, whether it's the street sweeping or storm damage or the like. And as we showed earlier, there's, there's been a deficit in this category for many, many years. I think one of the advantages of this budget presentation is that we can see it more clearly than maybe it was visible in the past. So I think to your point, you know, that, that's an area where there's some, certainly some general fund support.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up question through the chair?
Oh, sure.
On this item. To the point, and I know that interest of a lot of our residents and all of us relative, this is where we would see the incremental, if any, dollars being allocated relative to additional fire prevention efforts. So I, I was particularly interested in the one where it was the Woodside Fire. I think it was on 184.
Fuel mitigation.
Fuel mitigation. If that is at the normal level, we would have had in a regular year, you know, again, not, there's no, there wouldn't be an adjustment for that probably for COVID, but just from a regular ongoing maintenance perspective, or if that reflected any additional plans to basically augment that team or augment those activities in this next budget year.
Yeah, this is a great question. So last year, we initially allocated just over $28,000 for the year. The work actually didn't start until October of 2019. What we found was essentially two factors, and Howard, jump in if, if you, you have any detail you want to add. The first was that we were pulling our guys off of their normal duties to support that activity, whether it was actually doing a little bit of the work or doing traffic mitigation. So we wanted to ensure that that wasn't happening anymore because we were getting behind on it. So there's an augmentation of funds related to that. Secondly, the fund augmentation simply allows more work to happen faster. So we see ourselves, at least in these first couple of years, maybe the first few years, doing, doing a whole set of work. And then we'd be able to set it at a maintenance level with a maintenance schedule and ensure that the work that we put in place is over time accomplished. Howard, not to put you on the spot, do you, you want to add anything at all?
Well, you, you have it correct. When we started the program, it was a pilot program and we weren't aware how much, how the program was going to be developed. This was almost a year ago. And we were trying to be proactive in, in fire mitigation. And we didn't know how the program was going to look like. So we said, oh, I teamed up with Denise and said, well, how are we going to do this? And we were only budgeting for one person to do this work. Well, we found out one person can't do the work. It's almost a full crew to go down the street. You have to have several people working, several people doing traffic control. So in order to help that pilot program along, we had to pull two of our own maintenance people to work full-time Thursday and Friday along with the fire mitigation engineer. And to get even more work done, we had to get even a couple more people for it to be efficient and effective and make a dent in the situation. When we, when me and Don even looked at all the streets, we kind of said, well, wow, there, there's more work than, there's more work than anticipated. So it was a pro pilot program. We needed some time to, to kind of iron out the kinks. And looking forward, you know, we need to get that time back because when we didn't, when those two full-time people left Thursdays and Fridays, we didn't, we didn't, there was a void that we created. So all we're doing now with the budget is now that we know that what we want to do and what we want to do for the community is to fund it and staff it correctly with the right number of people and identifying the target streets along with the fire department. Does, does that make sense?
Yes, and thank you because that's what I was thinking this look, but given the magnitude of the jump, it clearly reflected some, some change in your group, obviously, relative to what you were doing or hoping to do in this next year. Thank you.
And just to, to do a little final color on that, the split is something like of the additional $120,000 in there. $123,000, I think it is. The split is something like an additional 40 to cover the, cover our guys and then another, call it the remainder for additional work.
And that is for, you know, that's a budget for Tuesday, Thursday, Fridays, year round. How, you know, that was the kind of outlook and the schedule that we planned for. It could be, we could even do more days a week, but the initial thought is Thursdays and Fridays every week year round.
John's got his hand up. Go ahead, John.
Okay, I just wanted to sort of add some higher, a little bit higher level thoughts about this discussion in terms of the fact that we were talking about some really important expenditures and fire safety and road conditions and all those, all those components of this. But we've been dipping into our reserve levels for quite a while. And if this continues, as it has, and our current revenues stay flat or drop, we don't have a whole lot of years that we can keep it up and still maintain that kind of expenditure. So in the past, we've, and we have had discussions about reserve level minimums. I think at one point, we even had a monthly report that showed about where we were on our expenditures and with a, and I don't remember what, what the percentage was that we had set to, to try to stay above, but I know we had something and we probably still do. But I think that's a discussion we probably ought to have because this, it doesn't look necessarily sustainable, unfortunately.
I'll take that as a question from John. The, I mean, the short answer is yes, in the long term, this is not sustainable. Now, there are factors that are affecting this particular budget that are different. The loss of a couple hundred thousand dollars in revenue from ERAF from, which may be permanent, we shall see. But ERAF continues to grow on some level. From our instructors, from our events, we certainly saw a dip as it related to planning activity. So if this had been a normal year, I think this budget would have been much closer to something revenue neutral into what I cap projects. But I think that this is an accurate statement that, you know, the budget is pretty tight. In the four and a half years that I've been with the town, there had been additional requests placed upon staff to do work where, you know, there isn't necessarily funding to do so or a little bit of funding to do so. We have the smallest staff in town, in San Mateo County, which is appropriate. And we're very proud of that. We're very proud of what we can do with that. But if there are, if there's a desire to have the levels of service that we've had, you know, we, we probably need to consider what, what this all means in the future. It's also worth noting that, you know, about 10 years ago, we lost a pretty significant funding source that supported our roads, which was the road impact. And that's not remotely easily replaced. But there are some unique factors this year.
So yeah, John, you've raised a good question there. There were several questions in the transmittal minmo that we were going to sort of go on to. What I'd like to do is I will, I'll take public comments right now and then we can come back and we can address some of those questions that staff was asking for direction on. So does anyone want, does anyone from the public want to comment on the budget at this time? Okay, Judith Murphy, Judy, go ahead.
Hi there. I, I bring this to you with some humility, having listened to the discussion so far about the budget. But I've done this for the last several years and I, and I want to do it again. The budget that we submitted for conservation committee itself is pared down from our usual indifference to the town's decreased income. And you need to throw more resources at fire prevention, which we understand our budget's usually minimal because our members support projects with a lot of time and effort. In addition to our small budget, however, I want to request some additional funds for public works as I have done in the past. In 2018, the council approved a three-year program for Springdown. This is year number three, 202, oh, two, one is year number three of that program. And last year, you may remember, Howard produced cost estimates for the items that conservation had required to be done to restore and improve the other most important properties. There were four columns in requests from low budget, urgent to expensive, lower priority. And that chart had been produced by Howard and me and represented a pairing down of our larger wish list. In fact, you approved the first three of those four columns for a total of 33,500. And most of that money was spent last year. There's still a few projects that are, have lingered because of the fact that town staff was, Howard's staff was busy with fire mitigation two days out of the week. And I think everybody can agree that town, Triangle Park and Town Center in Springdown look substantially better because of the additional work that's been done over the last year or two. The public works budget that Howard submitted for this year, this fiscal year, includes ongoing maintenance for those most important spaces. So I was a little confused by an earlier part of the presentation where Cindy had listed a large dollar amount in the CIP for saying that was things conservation had requested. So I may be confused about how things get shuttled into those two baskets. But from what I had understood in my conversations with Howard, his was it was ongoing maintenance that was in his budget. So conservation would like to request that this year you approve some additional funds for some of the items that were in that fourth column. And these are this year's focus on the five-year plan that Jeremy had, had requested. Your council priorities for this year included stewardship of these properties. And so it's in your, in your own priorities to focus on this. So here's our, here's our list. Fraud pond, I'd start out by saying it's not on what Sharon has thrown up here in the screen share, but volunteers from the neighborhood and local scouts did the requested coyote brush work, which had been estimated at about $10,000. So that amounts off the table. So shout out to the scouts and the neighbors who saved the town that much money and got the work done and did it very well. A request for a biologist to look at the pond. We've got several experts on the conservation committee, as you know, horticulturists, biologists, botanist. But we think an overview by someone who's not one of us would be good because we may be focused on just pieces and somebody who really takes a good look at what the, the overview of a restoration here would look like would enable us to prioritize our efforts, prioritize our requests to you and move more smoothly to keep all the pieces, the various pieces together that people at the ranch may want, the conservation may want, neighbors may want, et cetera. So B is thinning of some vegetation removal of non-natives along the trail. That had been a, a previous request.
Judith, Judith, you're, you're way past three minutes. Go ahead and finish up, but please do so quickly.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize it was in that three-minute part. I thought I had a little place on the agenda.
Go ahead and finish, but, but.
Okay. So there's that. There's, we'd like to start the difficult removal of the harding grass that chokes the pond. This week organized by our member Nona, a team of Jasper Ridge volunteer biologists who in non-COVID time meet weekly at Jasper Ridge to botanize, focusing on the grasses, did a botan- did a botanical inventory of the grasses that are managing to survive the harding grass density. They plan to do that seasonally at no cost to the town. That'll provide valuable information and a head start to any biologist we hire. We propose removing the harding grass over three to five years to make the cost more manageable is a bloody expensive project because it's been allowed to go unattacked for so long. The amount requested is from an estimate we got from a landscaping business who works in town. Volunteers would follow up by the removal of the grass by planting native grasses and wildflowers, and that would be at no cost to the town. There's some possibility that donations might cover some of the harding grass removal. Those funds were pledged, but they won't be available until after the official incorporation of the road remnant into the Frog Pond open space. There's some dense vegetation in the road remnant between the trail and Alpine Road that needs fire mitigation. I didn't put a number in there. I just want to bring it to your attention to make it a priority in the firework that's being done. And then in Town Center, we thought that it's important that you include something for creek maintenance. That's historically been done with grassroots ecology. And further protection of this heritage oak, a little bit of that was done previously. And these are the last items that were left on the arborist's request for what we do to protect that most important oak on the town property. Okay, so thanks very much. Appreciate your commitment to preserving a local environment. You've all expressed in various ways over many years that commitment. And open space, we know is important to all of us. I hope you can now reach into our funds and match that commit with some monetary support. Thank you very much. Appreciate.
Thank you. Rita is up next. Go ahead, Rita.
Hi, I had attended the finance meeting last week, most of it. Okay, let's try this again. I was trying to figure out how much money on the budget structure was for fire mitigation. And it seemed like it was less than fifty thousand dollars. And then there was this other money that was about a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. But with the values of the homes in this town, and it looks like there's an engineer that's now hired for a hundred and fifty one thousand a year, you know, what is, maybe it's in different pieces and and thank you for the suggestions that it, you know, they, for Craig, Council Member Craig, to have those put in a much easier way to look at all of it. But how much is actually for fire mitigation for the year? Except for, you know, minus this hundred and fifty one thousand dollars for the engineer? Can someone answer?
Jeremy, do you want to try to answer that?
I'm not sure how to answer it though by subtracting the engineer because that's, that's been our primary fire mitigation for the last two years. The additional fire services, the town does not provide, provide fire services. This is Woodside Fire Protection District business primarily. What we do provide to them is money to support the chipper program, to support Selena Brown and the SERP program. So that amount is sixty three thousand dollars. And then if you include the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it would be approximately two hundred thousand dollars total.
Okay, so two hundred thousand dollars for fire mitigation for this whole beautiful nine mile, square mile town?
Yes.
Well, will there be more in the budget for next year?
This is what the, Matthew, the chair, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
We have a wildfire preparedness committee that I think you're aware of that's been working on a suite of recommendations. Their first set of recommendations are being implemented this year. The medium-term items from that committee actually may all be implemented this year as well. The committee has been meeting again, particularly at subcommittees, and will have more recommendations. That's the vehicle that the council's been primarily accepting ideas. So I, I expect to hear much more from them. These issues aren't always solved by money. Some of the issues that the committee is working on, for instance, have to do with home hoarding, have to do with communications, have to do with other issues. So there's many different ways to provide what is becoming a very comprehensive welfare preparedness program in the town.
Thank you. Lucy, go ahead. Oh, Craig, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just to that point through the chair, I think there are additional, on top of the sort of two hundred thousand-ish that that you kind of went through, Jeremy. I think there are other things kind of mixed through all the departments. So that, you know, the clearing of trees on Shady Trail, for example, is fire mitigation stuff. I think a lot of what we're talking about for open space improvements is, is in some form fire mitigation. I think we have various EPC costs and setting up an EOC and some of the stuff under software for our virtual EOC is a portion of that could be considered fire mitigation. And that's, that's what I was trying to get at with my question is trying to figure out if for a question like this where you have, you know, a theme as opposed to what we think of traditionally as department, where you could draw a sort of funny shaped line through the budget and pull out a lot of individual items or portions of individual items from across different departments and different places where you, you know, it's, it's hard to kind of think of where those might be in advance unless you really go through comprehensively and say, well, is a portion of this fire mitigation is a portion of that fire mitigation? Because I think there's a lot of stuff we do that it's hard to kind of get a handle on it if it's not categorized according to the way that we traditionally categorize it. And I was just trying to understand what the capabilities of Open Gov are to, you know, potentially tag things with multiple things. So you don't, you don't necessarily know ahead of time, I want all the fire prevention stuff for all the emergency stuff, or I don't know what other categories there might be. But to think along those lines of being able to kind of pre-tag things, you can pull it out later. And I don't know what the easiest or best way to do that might be.
Well, I think that's what part of the, I mean, one of the, in this, either the memo or the the transmittal memo or the staff report, there was a question of how do we want to organize a report that specifically deals with everything that we're doing on fire? Because I agree with you that in the staff's assessment that we don't really clearly account for it, and it's, it's an important thing for us to be thinking about going forward. So I think we'll come back to that when we're discussing this, though. Lucy is up next. Go ahead, Lucy.
Thanks, Jeff. And thanks to the council. I just wanted to mention that I saw in the budget that the, the expenditures or costs related to the council is five thousand dollars. So I think we're getting a good bang for our buck there. And I just want to appreciate all your hard work that just costs five thousand dollars a year. And also, I happen to be the, the chair of the Finance Committee. I'm more speaking just as a resident of Portola Valley tonight, but that's part of my familiarity with the budget. So just also want to say kudos to Jeremy and Cindy and everybody else for their work on the budget. I really appreciate the new presentation. I think it's easier to interface with, so good job there. But mostly, I wanted to speak to fire safety. I don't know if anybody else saw on the first night of the CZU fire. You could see the glow over the western hillside. And for me, that just felt like kind of a turning point and thinking, wow, this is really real. This can hop the ridge and come right on over to our little fuel-laden town. And just, you know, there's been a lot of public commentary tonight on fire safety because obviously it's a huge thing on people's minds. And I just want to say that I think the town is, you know, is, has been increasing its expenditures the last years on fire safety, and I think that's great. I imagine for towns of our size, we are doing pretty well on that expenditures. But I think we can do better. I think this is going to be an increasingly pressing topic every year in California. I don't know if any of you read that article in the New York Times that said something like, don't think of this as the hottest August on record, think of it as the coolest August in, you know, the coming century. So, so, yeah, I think that Portola Valley can do better. I think we have a lot of resource and a lot of intelligence. And we have the, the ability and the privilege to prepare more than we are now. And one thing I want to mention, I think I mentioned this last year, is the open space acquisition fund. If you look at the budget, which, you know, I think our, our expenditures are something like eight million a year, and this is a pot of seven million that is largely just sitting there. And it's, you know, on the town website, it says it's used solely for the purchase and maintenance of open space within the town. Maintenance is not defined. To my understanding, it hasn't been used for maintenance yet. It's only been used for purchase. And I just think that that is an out, an outdated emphasis on the acquisition of open space. I mean, it's wonderful to acquire open space. We all love living in Portola Valley for the open space. But what is it if we're not taking care of it, if it's getting overgrown and it's subject to fire risk? So this is a fund overseen by the town council. And I just really want to encourage you all to consider using this fund, not just for the acquisition of open space, but for the maintenance of open space. I wonder like if there are specific properties that the town has its eye on that this seven million dollars seems really more important than using for fire safety. And, yeah, I just think if you look through the open space element in the town, which is what the open space acquisition advisory committee is advising the council on, you can see that scene at court, like everything in Portola Valley is open space. So the maintenance of open space is just completely applicable to all of Portola Valley. So it's fire safety. It's also what Judith was speaking to with Conservation Committee. I just, I just think there's this lag. There was, you know, an emphasis on acquisition. I think it's great if properties come up to still try and inquire them. But like, we need to take care of those properties. And as Council Member Richards was speaking to, the budget is feeling tight. And here's this seven million dollar pot that can be used for open space maintenance, which includes public safety. This pot largely comes from a two percent utility tax, users' utility tax, which is a matter of ballot initiative. For example, I think it would be great to maybe, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you. You're over three minutes. Go ahead and finish up, but please wrap up quickly.
Sure thing. Thanks, Jeff. The ballot, the next ballot initiative can't be till twenty twenty-two. I think this is a more urgent issue than getting a ballot on in twenty, a ballot initiative on in twenty twenty-two. So just really want to encourage the town council to look into the ways to use this seven million dollar pot of money for maintenance of our town's open space and not just acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Okay, Christie's up next. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I was glad to hear that you can code things for fire safety because they seem to be in different buckets right now. Encourage you to do that as soon as possible. Vegetation management, Woodside Fire District, maybe we could have a separate line item for chipping and a separate, I've been calling around to other cities to see what they're doing. And they have a line item for brushing, which is getting rid of ladder fuels. They have a separate line item for chippers. And they have four chippers, and a lot of them start May through November, and they work constantly, those four people. So, you know, and they also work with foresters. So they bring in foresters who manage the chippers, who tell them what to do. And then they deal with ladder fuels. So I'm going to encourage, and then vegetation management, storm drain, redwood trees, as you say. I think even getting more detailed on these line items and putting the same code. So when we want to look at the budget, we're able to, maybe I was going to say type in the word fire and they all get lined up. In your case, it would be codes, but can you put words to codes as well is my other question? So the public could go in and manipulate a bit to get the numbers they want. Because it was hard this year to find everything and see what the budget actually was for fire mitigation. How can we do that process better, I guess, is my question?
Okay, noted. Okay, Rusty's got his hand up next. Go ahead, Rusty.
Thank you, Jeff. I have one quick question and one short comment. Can someone tell us what the total assessed property value of the town is and how that's changed over the last five years?
I can get that. See, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Okay, it would be helpful to see that in the budget document, what the total assessed property value of Portola Valley is and how it's changed over the last five years. My comment, it's very difficult to do a budget, and a budget, particularly a public budget, because it's a weighing of priorities, and there are many priorities. And I don't mean to suggest or argue that fire safety is the only priority. It may be the most important. We could disagree about that, but it's certainly not the only one. However, when you think about fire safety, you think about the priority of fire safety. I think it would help us as residents of the town to understand what the total assessed value of the town is, what the total insured value of the town is, and what the market value of the town is. I think those are probably quite different numbers, but they're all in the hundreds of millions and billions of dollars. And that's what was at risk and burned up in Boulder Creek, in Paradise, in Felton, in Bonny Doone. So when we consider our priorities and look at a budget, I think it would help us as a town in budgeting to look at what it is we're trying to protect and ask ourselves, are we doing an appropriate level and the appropriate things to protect not just that asset base, but the lives that are entailed with it? And I think that we could come up with, it's, I realize dollars are scarce and we're doing line item budgeting, but we could be a little bit more creative than that. When we look at the assets and the lives we're trying to protect, we could think about, for example, well, where can we get grants? If this is really a priority for the town, how do we aggressively go after grants? Do we hire an employee to do that so that that employee is actually generating money for the town more than we're paying them? Do we consider a bond measure for the town so that we can fund a comprehensive and extensive program to reduce the hazard of wildfire in town? And is that a priority? And are we going to get behind that? So as we consider the budgeting process, I just want to suggest that we ought to be looking at in prioritizing where we're spending our money, what it is we're trying to accomplish with those expenditures and what's needed to accomplish it. And in fire safety, I think our number one objective is to prevent wildfires, not fight them, not, not evacuate the town when they occur. It's to prevent them. Thank you.
Thank you. David Cardinal's up. Go ahead, David.
Can you hear me okay? Yes. Yes. Oh, great. Yeah, I, I think on the one hand, Rusty's on the right track, which is we need to do more. But I'm, I'm totally confused by this emphasis on the town. I mean, we have six thousand acres. I would say ninety plus percent of it is owned by people like us. And from my gut and what we've written checks for, it's about ten thousand bucks an acre, maybe more to clear it, to be fire safe. And that's sixty million dollars. And the, the property owners of the town might want to spend that. We have. But that's not the town's thing. I mean, we, we need to own up. I mean, you know, get, get out there and lower the fuel load on your property would be my advice to all the people who are so concerned. I think that's the biggest thing we could do.
Okay, thanks, David. Okay, I see no other public comments.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Did I make just a, I wanted to make one comment. There was a.
Please, yes.
Yeah, there was a chat comment about comparing fire mitigation spending to Woodside and Hillsborough. The town of Hillsborough, in their last budget, actually budgeted about twenty thousand dollars less than we did on SERP and on the chipper program. And budgeted about twenty five thousand dollars more on their, they, I don't see. They, I don't see a program like the one we do in our right of way. They have a program that helps support residents, but they had $175,000 in that. So I, I think there's some differences there and probably what they spent it on, but that we probably spent a bit more per capita. Hillsborough is a completely different beast. They have, they participate in their own fire department. They also in 1998 passed basically a tax on their own communities on parcels for fire mitigation that's supporting that. I think it's a couple, I think it's $180, depend, $140, $180, depending on how big your property is. So they've already got a pretty large funding source for that. So I don't think that there's a useful comparison there. Thanks.
Okay. All right. So we had a staff that was asking us for some guidance on a few things. So you're also welcome to just comment on the budget overall if anyone wants to start to. Anne, do you want to start off?
Yeah. Sure. And I know you've heard me, those of you who've been doing this for a while, as I have. I think that I've always approached our budget as being the number one priority of this group in terms of managing it responsibly, conservatively and but reactive to obviously changes that we may need to make. And frankly, this year's budget kind of reinforced what I think we've all known for the last few years has been coming. From the perspective, it's, it's bringing down our reserves to a level that personally I'm uncomfortable that we are now at a point where just in this one year, we're dropping it down by 23% potentially, you know, through this. And I completely understand the reasons for it and understand the complexity and the demands now on our town and the staff and all the things that we're being, they're being asked to do and services to provide. And you throw on top of it, obviously COVID and increased sensitivity to fire. But I think in the aggregate, just stepping back for a moment to say, how does this budget look relative to its sustainability and what position it leaves a town in going forward? You know, the, the global number that jumped out to me is that essentially we need to draw down a half a million dollars from our general fund unrestricted reserves in order to balance it. So if you think about it as you would with either a corporate or a home budget, however you want to look at it, that's a big number, given it drops our reserves down from 22 to 17. And so it's a very significant number and I don't approach it lightly just because again, when you look at it as a percentage, I mean, if you take what we, if you add that into how much we basically are spending, you know, and I'm just going to take you back for a minute because we're spending all of the revenue we had, which is on the, you know, 5.7 million. And you have to add in that extra 500,000 to make it balanced so that we can pay for all the expenses that we're going to be paying. You're really up at over $6 million. What I'll call expenditures, it includes capital improvements and road impact. And then as our, with our remaining cash reserves, as a percentage of that, we're down to like 27% of one year's expenses. So if you think of this now nut adjusted for that additional dollars that are required, that's a pretty low reserve. We've had various ways. And again, I don't, I look to history to inform what we do. But in this environment, I'm much more concerned about what's the smart thing to do going forward. And in the past, we had a specific number that the council would always try and maintain reserves above a certain level. But in my mind, a much more relevant calibration is what I just described. How much of our current operating expenses could we pay if we had no revenues coming in tomorrow? And the reality is we've only got about a little over a quarter of a year worth of, under this kind of a budget. So it tells me we need to do a couple of things. Number one, we may need to tighten our belt a bit on some of the capital improvement numbers since that's really where we're, I think, at least able to adjust that. And that's one option. I think it also says, however, in a longer term basis, we need a different solution. And there's a couple of ways to approach that. And some of it can be, do we, and I know we talked about this along the way, but do we look at other replacement mechanisms for their, our old road impact fee? You know, what options do we have to explore? Potentially, given the amount of development and redevelopment we have in town, the impact on our roads with all of that construction activity, what other options can we explore to potentially generate somewhat additional revenues? That's sustainable and it's longer term. And I agree with Lucy and her commentary about looking potentially at the six and a half million dollar open space acquisition fund. And particularly as, and the Conservation Committee obviously is very interested in continuing with the projects that we've been looking to fund. But under my previous comments, as you can see, my problem will be where do we find that money? And it's not that I don't want to fund those projects. It's that I am concerned about all of the other expenditures on top of them. And so I don't think it's, we are either going to have to cut back on some of our other CIP items and replace it with what you were suggesting, I think, from the Conservation Committee or look to some additional sources and perhaps the open space acquisition fund. Since clearly it is applicable to a number of these items and a conservation's items could be a source of that. So I would encourage us to really look hard at, do we want to reprioritize the CIP spending? Since I think that's really where we can make some decisions now and or have staff explore the options relative to additional revenue sources and potentially the open space acquisition monies. And in that way, and I obviously agree with all the comments relative to fire safety. And I think Craig, yours were very helpful to, I think, help direct some of the consolidation of those comments. But I also agree that the majority of the onus is still on residents. It is all of us, it's me, it's everyone on this call who is an owner of property in Portola Valley, doing the best we can to keep our properties as fire safe as possible. So we're doing a lot at the, at the global community level and we'll continue to do that. I don't think there's any, you know, there's nobody pulling back on the throttle. If anything, we're trying to do as much as we can reasonably do. So those are my comments.
Okay. Thank you. Craig, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. I, I, I mostly agree with everything Anne just said with, with, I think, one, one minor twist, which is that the, the purpose of reserves is for dealing like with years like this year. The, the reason that we have reserves is that you have unusual blips when your spending goes up or your revenues go down. And, you know, we've been lucky, our revenues haven't really gone down substantially. They may even be, fingers crossed, we may be ahead of budget and actually our revenues may be higher than we expect this year. But our expenses have certainly gone up. And I think there, there are a couple of factors there. One is COVID and the other is fire safety and the increased amount of spending that we're doing in that area. And that's, I, I, I fully agree, you know, the, then with, with what David said earlier too, that the, the vast majority of the spending has to be from citizens improving their own properties and, and making their own properties fire safe. But the town is also a property owner. We, we own a lot of open space in town and we need to make sure that that land is safe. We need to make sure the right of ways are safe. We need to have education programs to help people understand how to make their own property safe. And then, and those are exactly the kinds of expenses that are in this budget and that we've been, we've been doing and we're going to continue doing and expanding. So I, I, I do agree, we can't deficit spend forever. But I, I think the reason, you know, our, our general fund has been accumulating money. I think as long as I've been on the council, every year we've ended the year with more money than we started. And this, this budget is heading in the other direction. But I, I kind of feel that's what reserves are for. So I don't see this as a, well, it's definitely an emergency situation, but I don't see it as a situation that I anticipate will extend for multiple years. I think that the costs that we have are largely transitional as opposed to permanent, at least around the COVID expenses. Not to say COVID's going away, but a lot of it was transitioning to work from home, changing the way we, we operate. We will have to adjust to some kind of new normal, whether our classes and other activities go back to normal and we get that revenue back. To some extent, that's offset by lower, lower expenses from not having to host those classes and clean up after them and so on. I think that we definitely are going to need to keep an eye on this and make sure that in following years, we get back onto the track that we were on in previous years, where we end up with surpluses rather than deficits. But I'm not, the one caution, the one caution I always have around budgets and looking at whether or not we have a surplus or a deficit is really around the long-term structural changes. So things like hiring employees where it's hard to reverse. Things like commit, you know, committing to long-term contracts, those sorts of things are really problematic for me. If I look at where the increases are across the budget broadly in this year and what's really leading to that, you know, 400, $500,000 overall deficit, they're, they're, they're really largely one-off expenses. And so I, I, I don't disagree with Anne that it's important that we make sure that those don't stay there and that we don't have a longer term problem. But I'm fairly confident that we can do that. And so I think for this one year's budget to have such a dip into reserves is, is okay. I, I feel comfortable with it for this year. I think I have other comments on the specific questions, but maybe we'll bring those back after.
We'll come back to those, yeah.
Okay.
John, go ahead.
Okay, I, I'm. I don't have a huge concern over the fact that the budget has, that we encroached in our reserves this year. I, I think it's, except that the fact that it's become more of a trend and as a town, not, in addition to the, to the fire safety demands and, and interruption of COVID and all the expenses that came with that. We seem to be really good at thinking up new ways to spend money for, I mean, we have a fabulous town center, we have more and more activities available. We have, our, our road system is almost perfect. And it just seems that demands of our, on our, on our staff and on our, our budget be just keeping, keep increasing whether or not they have, we have these emergency expenditures and that take a big hit at once. So I, I'm a little more in line with Anne's thinking that, I, I think we need to get a, at least come to a, a an agreement on the council as to which, of how we, how we might want to restrict our, our, our target, our budget surplus. How, how we want to, if we want to set a target at all on that. But I do also do think that we may want to look into some more revenue raising prospects such as a bond measure for these really special situations with fire especially as we go forward. So yeah, I'm, I think I'd be interested in having the, having the staff look at the budget one more time and see if they can recommend places that we can trim things a bit at this point. At least long-term. Get, get some ideas so we'll have more of their expertise going into further discussions on how we, how we might rearrange things.
Okay, thanks, John. Mary Ann, go ahead.
Hi. I am a little freaked out about going into the reserves the way we have this year. I've been on the council the longest and this is the first time I've ever felt really uncomfortable with a budget. But when I look at the budget, I really, it's very lean. I don't really know how it can be trimmed unless we go into the capital improvement projects. And they're not, you know, glamorous projects. They're, they're pretty bread and butterish. I am concerned about the roads because we've lost so much revenue there. I think we do have to look into other ways to generate revenue for the roads. We had a discussion about using open space funds for maintenance. And if I remember correctly, the open space committee was not so much a fan of that. Am I remembering correctly?
That's true. I think that's right.
Yeah, I mean, I legally, can we use those, those funds for something like vegetation management? Or our property?
My understanding was that, that maintenance of, of properties. Go ahead, Cara. Don't let me, don't let me try to cancel that.
Yeah, so the 2% set aside from the UUT, the measure simply states that the fund shall be placed in the open space account. And the council has the discretion to determine what the open space account can be used for. So I think that ultimately you do have, you know, if you make the, if you make a finding that this is an appropriate expenditure for the open space account, you could use some of those funds for, for maintenance.
Okay, then I think we should look into that. We can also raise the UUT. Early on in my tenure, they lowered it, I think a percent. So we could always raise the UUT. Could any of that be used for fire safety?
Yeah. Yes, because it's general, if it's the, if it's the, the four and a half percent general fund UUT, yes. The, the two that goes into open space theoretically could too, but I think you're making the difference between those two amounts.
So there's another thing we can do. I do believe that most of the burden is on residents. I did have Kenan from H and H Wildlife, no, Wildland Fuel Mitigation come out and I am waiting his bid and I will do whatever I have to do on my own property. And I believe everybody in town has to take that view. So overall, I, I think staff did a great job with this budget. It's a very difficult year. We are all deathly afraid of fire and we know we all have to do a lot of work, the town included. Let's look for more revenue streams. Let's keep looking for grants. I know the Woodside Fire Protection District, at least Denise, used to always be looking for grants. And proceed in that manner.
Jeremy, go ahead.
Yeah, just on the grant issue. Denise, Anya, who used to do the fire marshals now with Fire Safe San Mateo County. Denise and I talk regularly about grant opportunities. She's, she operates in a de facto role as her, is our grant finder and helps write them. I write some of them too. So on an annual basis, we apply for two, three, four grants. The last couple would apply for, unfortunately, have not worked out. But we regularly look for grants as well. I, I wouldn't recommend hiring somebody to just do grants. The town of Portola Valley historically struggles in the grant department because of our size and because of our affluence. Those are two issues that always we run into when we go out for grants. We're, our size is an interesting one because the projects sometimes don't meet thresholds for how much they're supposed to do because of our size. So we run into that as well. Grants are tough. Grants are really tough.
Okay. I'll just add on, I, you know, I, I don't like running the deficit either. But I, I mean, and, and I, you know, I'd be all for asking staff to go back and look at, at capital improvements or anywhere else that might, where we might be able to put something off or I'd be, I think that's, that's, it's fine as a recommendation. I'm, but I also think the, the bigger concern for me is that the long-term trend because we, we know that our expenses are going up faster than our revenues will go up. And so we know that those, you know, COVID and this year aside, we knew those lines were going to cross at some point and we're, we're getting close to that point. So, you know, we've talked about the UUT increase that we, we could, we, we have the discretion to raise UUT. I think 1%. Believe we voted it down two years ago. I don't remember the details, but that was, that was in the report. We were, the one question is, do we, do we consider raising the UUT again? The open space funds, Judy Murphy actually put a comment in the chat box, which I was trying to remember, which, and then, which is a good one, which is that some people donate to open space funds specifically expecting the, the money to be used for acquisitions. So if we were to consider using for maintenance, I think we have to think carefully about the impact on that and what's, what's already in there and what might be donated in the future. I'm not, I'm not trying to say one way or the other. It's just, it's, it's something to consider if we, if we are serious about sort of trying to rededicate open space funds for maintenance.
If I could just broaden that, having talked to the open space acquisition committee a few times in the past about this period. If I could just broaden that, having talked to the open space acquisition committee a few times in the past about this very issue, that, that is a concern of theirs that I, I do want to represent that. That the fund, since it doesn't expressly discuss, it says open space projects, that people have an assumption that that means something pretty specific. That it means acquiring the properties. So I think that there certainly would need to be some thoughtfulness as it relates to having that conversation with the community and recognizing that, you know, that the town does still get pretty significant bequeathments from people into that fund as well. Or not, that would continue if they thought the money would be used for maintenance or something else. It's, I, I think it's worth discussing and we're acknowledging.
So we, we had a few, the staff was looking for direction in a few things. I think we've, it sounds like we've got some consensus around. We, we'd like to reconsider whether all of the capital improvements are, are critical at this point. It sounds like we'd like to think about other sources of revenue, including possibly that UUT increase. We've, we've have the discretion to vote on, as I recall. You know, looking into the open space fund, it sounds like we, we at least want to see where, where, see what, what, what options we have with that. What else? Cindy, Jeremy, what else were you looking for in terms of, you got some questions you wanted to answer. I'm trying to, I couldn't find them.
I'll pull that up in a second, just to, I could just get a little more clarity. So first of all, as a, a statement, thank you for the, the comments tonight. This, this is very helpful. If you noted in the transmittal memo, I had indicated that I wanted to schedule two budget study sessions with the council in the fall. So we'll be doing that. And in recognition of these challenging issues, the council's already had a few of these, as you said, Mr. Mayor, this is, this is an issue we recognized was coming sooner or later. So I think it's very timely to have this conversation now about what's appropriate related to revenue and expenditures. The guidance that I heard was to go back and to use, I think Ann's phrase, maybe a little out of context, but tighten the belt a little bit on maybe around capital improvement. Is there, is there a specific number? Is, is, is it, see what we can come up with? I just want to make sure I understand what the takeaway is for staff when we come back on the 20th, excuse me, the 14th.
Ann had her hand up. Ann, why don't you go ahead and?
I, I was going to originally just add to your list, Jeff, that you mentioned, which was to also look at the, have staff look at the replacement to the road impact fee alternatives. And I know Cara will be heavily involved in that discussion since, since that's a complicated issue, but I didn't want it to be lost. And so, but since you're asking the question that I know that I had raised initially, Jeremy, I think in my mind, it is, as Mary Ann, I think appropriately pointed out, there's nothing terribly sexy about any of the items that are on the list under the CIP. And I know that the vast majority of them are something that is, what's hard to understand is just all of the sort of pre-work and design and resurfacing project design, et cetera, that is in there and, and you're looking and saying, well, if we're not doing major road projects in this year, do we need to do that pre-work? Can we shift it into 2021, 22? And so, and, and I'm not trying to take away the maintenance truck because I know that, that, you know, you can see through the bottom of the floorboards in the current one and that's, it's an unsafe situation. So yeah, we've, we've pushed that and pushed that. So it's not certainly designed to do that, but it's really to say, are there things here? And, and it's weighed off against some of the requests that, for instance, Judy made on behalf of the conservation committee tonight. And so in my mind, I wouldn't necessarily have those. I think if we, you know, part of the answer to your question will be dependent upon whether we think it's appropriate to look at some limited use of the open space fund for maintenance, you know, as a, as an opening, potentially an opening move on the part to be able to bridge some of this. Because there's a number of items in here under our CIP that would very clearly fall into that category. So that may be another way to pull a few things out and look at them. So I, I can't answer it specifically, other than I think it's through that combination of possible solutions that you will potentially find some either reallocations or savings, you know, or some additional dollars of revenue that could, could cover it.
Okay, that's helpful. I think that emphasizing a focus on which it's, it's probably longer term revenue sources than it is a revenue source that we just simply added to the budget here. But you know, the other thing that I wanted to mention, and it was pointed out, but I want to be pretty specific about it. I think Craig had mentioned it, that, you know, we have most years come in a little bit better on the revenue side than we have budgeted. Some of that might be designed, but some of that is just that, you know, things have gone our way. A great example is just the success of the Alpine Inn this year. They have just gone gangbusters on sales tax. Things like this occur in town. But you know, this, this year is no exception. Part of that was driven by COVID frankly. But we also did really well in, in, in interest from our investors. The, the other thing I want to point out too, is that we are expecting approximately $50,000 from the federal government to support COVID expenditures. So that's not an amount that I wanted to budget because you just never know with these things. That is coming. So that's a little bit more that I wanted to put out there. You know, just if I can make a couple of specific comments that I know that this wasn't the direction, but hopefully this is helpful. With the design work for the roads, I do not see any opportunity really to, to change those amounts. Those are pretty tight amounts. The, the truck, someone pointed out that we've been pushing this off a couple of years and it's, it is, it needs to go. We will take a look at this though, you know, particularly as it relates to grants. You know, I'm, we're hopeful that pedestrian safety study improvements can get funded by some of this, or some, by grants. So that could be something that could come off. But we'll, we'll definitely take a look. But I think the focus on a little longer term revenue and then having the budget study sessions, we'll, we'll get that further. And this feels like a kickoff of a pretty, pretty good community conversation about the town's budget. Thank you.
Okay. So it sounds like, it sounds like staff has gotten sort of guidance they were looking for on the budget right now. And so we're, so the next step will be the hearing on the 14th. Is that correct? Or the, the 14th, yes. So right, okay. Any other comments from the council before we move on? Okay, Ann, go ahead.
Thank you to the staff. I want to echo the comments I think that were made by a number of my colleagues. It's been a heck of a year. And to Jim too, obviously, as our consultant and Cindy leading the charge with Jeremy. And it's, it was not easy to go to the two systems and work with the two systems and it's still challenging, but I think the new format, longer term, is going to give us a ton of flexibility and, and obviously hopefully accomplish all that you were hoping it would. So thank you.
Thank you. Those are the words I was going to say next. So, oh, Mary Ann, go ahead.
Yes, and I especially want to thank Cindy and I really love her hair. Thank you. Looks really good.
All right. All right. Okay, yes, um, thank you for, thank you for all the work on this and thank you for being here tonight to, to, to present it.
Jeff, through the chair, Mason, just a five minute break?
Uh, I was good. Yes, absolutely. Five minutes. We'll come back, come back at 9:05.
All right.
So we're back in recording. Okay, so, um, yes, it was pointed out, we did not address the one question from staff regarding the budget, or two questions, and that was CPIs on fees for, for town services and CPI on staff salaries. Does anyone want to make a comment on that or start off?
I'll make a quick comment. For the, for both the fee schedule and the salary schedule, we have increased those by CPI every year. I'll start with the one that I think is a little bit easier for the salary schedule. This isn't the salary that we actually pay people. This is the range that's available for a salary position. And I, I, my recommendation is I think it's appropriate to go ahead and move it up by the, the current CPI, which is said is just over 1% right now. I think it's 1.4. The fee schedule is a little bit different. You know, when we went into the interim budget, we were trying to keep things as flat as possible. We didn't want to make changes to impact people. I think we're fortunate that the town is a relatively simple activity, either in businesses or town activity, like planning and building and the like. Things are up, it is busy. I'm not getting a sense that a modest increase would, would be impactful to those services. So my recommendation would be to, to also bring back a fee schedule that is modified by the same CPI 1.4, I believe it is. And then that actually will have a, a little bit of a revenue impact on the budget that we could bring back on the 14th. Thank you.
I would, I would tend to agree with the, with the CPI increase on the fees. I think, I, I agree, construction is actually doing fairly well right now. I think we should just, I think as, as a question of preserving revenue and trying to say somewhat balanced, I, I, I'm for it. I don't know if anyone wants to weigh in on that. We okay with that?
I, I'd be supportive of an increase for both the ranges and the, and the fees. The, the only question I have is whether the increase on the low end of range is going to impact anybody, but I'm assuming it's not, or you would have told us.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last part of that, Craig.
If the, if we applied a CPI increase to the salary ranges that we have, would that indirectly impact anybody because they'd be hitting the bottom end of the range and need to get pulled up?
No.
Yeah.
No, it, it, if there's any issue, it was at the other end, but we've repaired it over the last couple of years.
Yeah. Okay, so I would say that we should probably look at doing, at, at applying the CPI to both those, those cases. Is that reasonable? Yeah. All right. Okay, we'll move on to the climate action plan study session. Brandy, or Jeremy or Brandy?
I'll turn it over to Brandy and Brandon.
Oh, Brandy and Brandon, thank you. Welcome.
Hello, council members. Thank you for hearing this from us tonight. I'm going to attempt to share my screen again here. Are you seeing now the study session up there? So tonight, Brandon and I are going to be giving you an overview of a potential path forward to a climate action plan. Brandon is an intern who has been working with us, both in our communications and sustainability areas. So we'll both be presenting to you tonight. This is a quick overview of what we're going to cover. We're going to just give you some idea of why we have climate, climate action plans with greenhouse gas emissions targets, the basics of climate action plans, regional landscape, the status of our current inventories. And then we're going to, Brandon is going to review some tools that we can use to develop a climate action plan. Then we will discuss initial next steps and we'll ask for some feedback. So first, I wanted to sort of give you an overview of how we come to, why we have climate action plans. So we climate action plans are driven by greenhouse gas emissions targets. And they are, they are a way to reach those targets and greenhouse gas emissions inventories are ways to measure our progress with those targets. And so the, there's extensive state legislation that addresses greenhouse gas emissions mitigation. And those are covered in the RICAP template, which we provided in the staff report. There's, there's detailed listings of what those targets are. And then as far as the Portola Valley emissions targets that the council has adopted, the main target that the council adopted was AB 32 targets, and that was in 2006. And that's to reach 1990 levels by 2020 and then be below, 80% below 1990 levels by 2050. And then the council has also adopted or signed on to the Paris Agreement and the mayor's 100% clean energy initiative. So as I mentioned, these, these are what drives climate action plans. And once we bring forward the climate action plan to the, to the council, the council could consider new targets or commitments based on the status of the town's emissions. And now I'm going to turn it over to Brandon to review the basics of a climate action plan and some of those tools that I mentioned in the beginning.
Thanks, Brandy. So though, so for those of you who don't know, RICAPs or the Regionally Integrated Climate Action Planning Suite has published an online template through which towns and cities in San Mateo County can develop their climate action plans. Due to the fact that its suite of tools and templates provides a semi-standardized model by which cities and towns in the county can build and update their climate action plans, we thought it wise to consider using these models in lieu of hiring a consultant to build one up from scratch. In this way, we both have a standardized system by which we can continue, continue to update our climate planning efforts as well as a model through which we can compare and build potential collaborations with other cities and towns in San Mateo County. To familiar, to familiarize you with its structure, the RICAPs template can primarily be broken down into three different categories, being contextual information, town-specific climate data, and strategy or implementation plans, as detailed in the chart above. In general, we hope to follow these formatting principles, but are more than open to input on components that council would like to see later on in the feedback portion of the session. Next slide. As previously noted, the RICAPs template has provided a structure by which the process of climate action planning can be semi-standardized. And this has resulted in an uptick, both in its use and in climate action planning in general, with about 50% of the cities and towns in San Mateo County either in the process of updating or already having updated their climate action plans for 2030 and beyond. Of the currently existing climate action plans, 55% of those cities or towns have used the RICAPs template, with 30% having developed their own unique models via consultant and 15% either not having a climate action plan or not designating the method that they used. Now, I know the slide looks a little heavy, but bear with me and I promise I'll explain. Both of the tables on this slide come from the town's 2017 greenhouse gas inventories. What I would like to call attention to are the values circled in red in the top image. If you look at the CO2 emissions from local roads between 2016 and 2016 and 17, you see an over 100% increase in the amount of emissions documented. This struck us as odd, given the fact that 2017 was also the year that the town began working with Peninsula Clean Energy. After speaking with a representative from the San Mateo County Office of Sustainability, it was deduced that this was due to our continued use of an inboundeering model to calculate our emissions data. An inboundeering model calculates emissions from cars traveling within the town, no matter their starting point or destination. The issue with this is that on top of providing potentially skewed data, this model also doesn't give us any input on the transportation emissions that we can affect via policy changes. Therefore, it was recommended that we instead switch to an origin destination model to calculate our emissions moving forward. This model instead calculates the emission, the town's emissions based on the origin and destination of vehicles traveling in Portola Valley, i.e. people who live in Portola Valley and commute to work outside of the town, and people who live outside of Portola Valley and commute to work inside of the town. Not only is this a local model that better encapsulates our emissions data, it also better captures the impact of potential policy measures in our projections. If you look at the bottom table, I would like to call attention to the two data comparisons, again, circled in red. In the first, we can see a marked increase denoted by a positive number in transportation-related CO2 emissions in the town between 2005 and 2017, using the inboundeering, using the inboundeering method. In the second, on the right, you can see a marked decrease, as noted by a negative number, in set emissions using the origin destination method. This directly models the impact of the increased use of electric vehicles in the town, of which Portola Valley has some of the highest use rates, and again demonstrates the benefits of using a localized origin destination model. Therefore, moving forward, we would recommend that the town wait to do any comprehensive data analysis until we receive our 2018, 19 greenhouse gas emissions invent, inventories at the end of the 2020 calendar year. As this will both give us data where we, where we have spent a full year on Peninsula Clean Energy, receiving 100% renewable electricity, and give the Office of Sustainability the chance to adjust our emissions models to better identify potential areas for improvement. Next slide. So whether we choose to formally adopt a climate action plan or not, RICAPs also has a myriad of useful tools that we can use to comprehensively shape our sustainability goals. One such tool is the menu of measures, which is a data analysis tool that provides projections for a comprehensive list of policy measures that town can pick from to develop its climate action plan, which I will share screen with you to show you now. So as you can see, as you can see here, the menu of measures basically gives details for a very, very comprehensive list of different policy measures that you can implement as part of a climate action plan. And these are broken down into several different categories, as well as broken down into several different projection years, being 2030, 2040, 2045, and 2050.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Brandon, is there a way to make that a bit bigger at your end?
Bigger?
Maybe the lower right there, you can, yeah, there we go.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry, I can zoom in as I bop around here. So I can just use the one from 2030 as an example. You basically have the measure name, the description, the type of approach it is, and then in here you can select basically whether or not you would like the town to pursue this policy measure. Once the data from the town has been input into this spreadsheet, you can select which measures have, are potentially, you are potentially interested in or are relevant to the town, and it will provide an emissions impact for that measure. So that way you can see which measures will likely have the largest emissions impact in every target year of being 2030, 40, 45, and 50. Once all of that has been input, you can go into this area here, which is an all-measure summary, and actually get a comprehensive look as to where we can focus our emissions impact. And it kind of aggregates all of that data into one place. Here, I'll stop here. Okay. So though we won't know which measures out of that list are most efficient relative to Portola Valley until we have up-to-date data input into the menu of measures, RICAP'S has put together a list of those that they have found to be statistically of the highest potential, which are indicated by the bars and the graphic here. Of note here is the fact that as we're partnered with Peninsula Clean Energy, we already are implementing many of these measures in our climate action planning today, as indicated by the green bars in this graphic here. Other measures that are left that may be pertinent to Portola Valley most relate to transportation and building electrification. So it's reasonable to assume that future planning will revolve heavily around these subcategories, although this will depend on the data projections provided by the menu of measures. Moving forward, Brandy will speak how we might choose to adopt our climate action plan once we've acquired said data projections.
Now that you have a basic framework of the elements of a climate action plan, I'd like to discuss a couple of approaches for adopting a climate action plan and then potential next steps. So some cities formally adopt a climate action plan as part of their general plan and then use it to tear off of it offer environmental analysis, or as a threshold for measuring greenhouse gas emissions impacts of other private projects. This approach requires an environmental impact report before adoption. Other cities are choosing to adopt their climate actions, climate action plans as more of a work plan, which gives more flexibility to respond to technological opportunities and/or policy changes that may be in place when a program is implemented. That said, implementation of individual measures within the climate action plan may require sequoia analysis, but the analysis would likely be less than an environmental impact report. So with, with the work that we're doing, we see these initial next steps as we go forward. Once we receive feedback from the council, we will pursue these steps. As Brandon mentioned, staff believes there's value in waiting for the 2018 and 19 inventories from the county before performing the analysis of the individual measures. We enrolled with Peninsula Clean Energy in 2017, but 2018 was the first full year that customers were receiving 100% renewable energy, and using this data will give us a clearer picture of the opportunities for emissions reductions. Once we have that, that data and we acquire and input additional needed data into the menu of measures, we can analyze the highest potential measures. Then we anticipate soliciting feedback on these measures based on the community engagement direction that we receive from the council. With that, these are the, these are the areas that we need feedback from the council on. As, as we mentioned, there's, some cities have utilized the RICAP'S template and menu of measures. We see the advantage of pooled resources and the technological and data assistance and expertise that this provides. If we were not to go this route, staff believes we would need to hire a consultant because we do not possess that expertise to move forward. In addition to that input, we need to better understand if the council would like to adopt the climate action plan for formal adoption or as a work plan. We also would like you to weigh in on our approach for identifying programs for consideration as far as giving the high potential measures the most weight, and then thoughts on community engagement. Once we have this feedback, we plan to bring draft preliminary timeline and outline of next steps to the council for review as we proceed. So with that, we're looking for that feedback and any questions that the council may have.
Okay. Questions from the council? We'll start with questions and then we can kind of go through these, these points for feedback. Craig. Okay. Craig, go ahead, and then Mary Ann's got her hand up in the box. So I saw Craig said on the screen.
Is the, is the RICAP'S template and the calculations and so on that they're using, do they use the same modeling for large cities and small cities? I mean, I imagine it's parameterized somewhat, so you have a little bit of flexibility in how it works, but is the primary focus going to be the larger cities in San Mateo County? I, I'm just, I'm just curious as to how good the model will fit for us. Will it, do, do you guys think from your work with it so far that it would be reasonably accurate as applied to Portola Valley? At least at the level of, you know, helping us understand the priorities, even if the exact numbers may be a little bit off here, a little bit off there. But, but overall worthwhile to not need a consultant to create something that's more customized to Portola Valley?
I can answer this one. Um, yeah, at least as of looking over the menu of measures thus far, I think it would work as a really, really effective tool. Jeremy can definitely attest to this, like, basically, they, they've input all of the town's 2017 data already into their model, so it's, it's not a larger model, it's a model that you can specifically tailor to the town's inventory data. And before we made the decision to probably wait until we have more recent climate data, I sent Jeremy a long list of data that I would need to be able to plug into this spreadsheet to be able to actually effectively use it. But at least from what I can see in the projections thus far, they do seem to be quite detailed and quite accurate. And I think it would serve as a really good tool and good model to kind of give accurate projections or at least prioritizations to which measures would be best for a climate action plan.
Thanks. Mary Ann, go ahead.
Brandy, can you explain the difference between a work plan and formal adoption?
Yes, and if, if Carla wants to weigh on this, in on this as well, she might have more to say about it, but I, a work plan is basically a guide, whereas a formal adoption has legal implications as you undertake private development. For example, you could use, if you went through formal adoption and you completed an EIR, for example, a larger city, you could use that EIR as the basis for private development. Carla, do you have anything to say in addition to that?
Thank you, Brandy. So what, what some cities do is they actually adopt the climate action plan as an element of their general plan, as, as Brandy mentioned. That requires some type of sequoia analysis. It could be an EIR, especially if you are adopting it in connection with other elements of the general plan, then you typically do an environmental impact report, which it takes a long time. It can take up to two years to, to complete an EIR. So that's the downside of formally adopting it as an element of your general plan. The, the benefit of adopting it as part of the general plan is that you can then impose mitigation measures on private projects that have been identified in the climate action plan. And applicants also can determine what the thresholds of significance are going to be for a private developments analysis of greenhouse gas impacts in connection with the review of a private development project. I think that that's, that benefit is, is, is more applicable to, to larger cities. We don't do a lot of, of, you know, EIRs here, and so I don't know that that benefit would really help Menlo Park. So that's the formal adoption. In terms of a work plan, Menlo Park just adopted a climate action plan as a work plan. They adopted three particular programs and policies and are now in the process of implementing those policies. So a work plan doesn't commit the, the town to achieving those, those policies or those goals, but it establishes, I think, a, a, you know, it's, it's a, it's a an aspirational type of plan and effort can be made to, to implement to the extent, you know, feasible and practical. I hope that helps.
Yes, thanks.
Any other questions? Just questions over the presentation? Let's see, other hands? That's the case, I am. Are you, okay. Right now, so I can't see you.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I just, just correct me if I'm wrong. It looks like either, either form, either work plan or formal adoption would give us, give us the opportunity to evaluate various different approaches. It seems like with the work, work plan, you might even be able to use that in a, as a starting point, and then make modifications as you go into it and find out what, what is going to work best and then maybe adopt it. It's forming later on, after you've got a better feel for how the template is, is working for the town. Is that, is that a reasonable way to look at the, at the use of the templates?
Yes, yes, John, that is a reasonable way to look at it. And I think, I think for, my opinion is that the work plan, at least initially, provides the flexibility to adapt with, with the changing landscape of, you know, as we go forward with these measures. When we were looking at adopting a 2020 climate action plan, one of the things that we were facing was there weren't really enough innovative measures to get at our emissions as far as the natural gas in the residential sector and then our other main target, which was transportation. And now that's, you know, just in a few years, that's all changed. And so I really want us to be able to adapt as to those changes and, and be innovative. So I, I like the idea of the work plan, at least initially, because of that.
Yeah, that sounds good to me, too.
Okay. All right, so I'm just looking through the, the feedback. I would lean towards the, the RICAP'S template versus trying to come up with something separately. I, I mean, I've, I'm a little bit familiar with it. I think it's, it's certainly, I think it's, I think it's enough for, for our purposes. I think, you know, there's, I mean, it is actually pretty, it does seem to, it takes our data and sort of gives us reasonable guidance based on our actual data. It's not sort of too, too skewed towards bigger or larger cities. I would probably lean towards using that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, do you want to see if there's any, I didn't hear if there was a public comment yet?
Yeah, yeah, so, no, that's, it's a, thank you. Does anyone from the public want to comment on this right now? I wasn't seeing any hands up, which was part of why I was looking at, but okay, we'll move on. If you do, if anyone from the public doesn't want to comment, raise your hand. I'm happy to, happy to have you comment. So I, I lean towards the RICAP'S template. I like the work plan as well, just because I think the EIR just sounds like it would take us a year to get to the point where we're actually using it or longer, and I just don't, I just don't, it's hard to picture a situation where we'd actually want to be able to apply something here in town. I could be wrong about that. So in terms of identifying the programs for consideration, yeah, I mean, I would definitely would, would look at sort of the biggest, you know, our biggest sources, and you've already identified them. Any transportation is, is the obvious one, and then natural gas for heating and heating water would be the, the two places I could imagine us having a big impact, just because they're such big loads. Craig, go ahead.
On the high potential measures, does, does the RICAP template include kind of cost estimates for these different programs? Because you want high impact, but what you really want is kind of bang for your buck. And so does it give you a sense of that in terms of the templates of what the cost to, not just the town, but to the, you know, residents on which these programs would be? You know, if we change building codes or something, then that would be a cost to people who are constructing their properties potentially. Does it give you a sense of that sort of bang for the buck notion, or just really a sense of the total impact?
The menu of measures itself doesn't know. The menu of measures just provides emissions impact. So in general, basically, as Brandy kind of articulated in the next step section, what we would hope to do is to be able to find which measures would have the highest emissions impact relative to Portola Valley, and then bring that to the council to discuss in detail kind of those specifics as to which one of these are actually reasonable, which ones would be good to include based on your own knowledge of the community, based on your knowledge about how easy or difficult or expensive they would be to implement. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Because I think that, I, I think that approach makes sense of, of, you know, starting at the the highest potential ones and considering, you know, okay, is there one that's maybe a little lower impact, but it might actually save everybody money. And so, you know, a cheap education program may go a lot further than a potentially, you know, complex building code that might raise people's costs that they wouldn't, you know, they try and cheat on as much as possible.
Mary Ann, did you have your hand up, or was that hand up from previous?
I will lower it now, okay?
Okay, just checking. Yeah, so I, I think, yeah, we, high potential measures, we identify kind of the big targets, and then we figure out if it's actually feasible to, to, to go after them. I mean, community engagement, I think obviously, you know, our committees, several of them will be very interested. I know sustainability will, will be all over this. I'm guessing some others will as well. I think that's, that's probably the, I mean, very obvious place to start. I'm thinking schools will be interesting place to, to try to, to get some buy-in. PCE constantly sort of goes out in the community and tries to, to foster programs at the public schools in particular. I think that would be interesting thing to, for us to consider, and maybe even partner with PCE, because they, they have actually a lot of good outreach programs for their programs and might, might, might extend to something that we're trying to do.
Jeff, other than the sustainability committee, what, what committees do you see weighing in on this? And then we, one that comes to my mind because of co-benefits, we're, we're realizing with battery backup is, you know, potentially bringing it to EPC and perhaps that ad hoc wildfire committee, but are there other committees? Perhaps conservation, or just if you could give us, if the council could weigh in and give us a little bit of guidance on that?
Yeah, EPC and the fire committee for sure, because there'd be a lot of opportunities there. I mean, you know, cable and undergrounding isn't really terribly active. I mean, there's people on that, from that committee that might be interested in, I mean, would, would probably be interested in this just because it's kind of fits with their general background and interests.
Maybe one or two, but it might be better to have them, you know, get them to take seats on.
Maybe we, yeah, maybe we, maybe. Yeah, fair enough.
We had been talking about potentially reactivating the team, team committee, and Jeff, too. And Jeff, too, about getting the schools engaged, this might be one for, they might have a lot of diamond in on this one.
Yep, no, that's a, yeah, that's a great idea.
Through the chair, would BPTS be a place maybe too, if we're going to be looking at walkability sort of concepts?
And e-bikes.
Trails, yeah. For walkability or bike related things.
Yeah. Yes, definitely. Any, any others, anyone have any thoughts on?
Maybe finance.
Yeah, yeah. I'm trying to think of, you know, the schools would would be a partner. I mean, I, I don't know about the Sequoia, I'm just trying to think of other, other places we could reach out. I don't know if other institutions would be interested. I mean, some churches are actually very interested in this, so, you know, the local churches might might have some interest in in some program like this or something, something associated with this. I don't know.
Sequoia is actually one of our biggest opportunities as far as natural gas is considered. So it would be great to to partner with them.
Finally get rid of that Cogen plant. We've been talking about that for years, yeah. Yeah, one time they had, they were talking about actually going forward on the solar project in the roof, which would be, which would be amazing, but we'll see. So next steps in timeline, it sounds like, it sounds like we'd at least be waiting for data till the end of the year. Are there, there's things you could probably be doing during the, during that time to sort of, I mean, while you're waiting for the data, I assume?
Yes, there's additional data that we need to collect that won't be provided by the county, more data that that the town has, so we can work on collecting that. And then what I was proposing was that we, once we have, now that we have this feedback from the council, we take this and we put together a proposal of how we would move forward as far as engaging the committees and knowing when that that data will come in and then perhaps bring it back to the council, even as a a digest item to kind of, you know, if you see something you want us to adjust, you could pull it. But that was what I had in mind is that the first part of the next steps in the timeline.
Would you want to, would that, that first report come back to us maybe later this year or are you thinking earlier, 21?
I, I think probably, well, depending on when we get that data back from the county, but I was, I was thinking later this year.
Okay, so you move forward on kind of the overall outline while we're waiting for the data and then get sort of get into that data, meet of that early, early next year?
Yes, correct, that's what I was proposing.
I'm trying to think if there's anything reason, there's a deadline next year we're trying to make. I can't think of one. Does anybody else have any thoughts on when we, when would you like to see sort of a, a, a plan for us to be reviewing? Any thoughts?
If I could, through the chair, I, one of the, I think is good about this is that this will be happening in advance of a potential general plan update. So the timing's pretty good on that. But other than that, council's discretion.
Does that mean maybe we should try to get this done in the first half of 21 so that we could sort of focus on the general plan later in the year?
Well, I don't, I I think we would have a little more time than that. I I think the kickoff into a general plan is actually that that pre-planning, processing, engagement with the community, that takes some time before you really get into any meat. So I, I would, I don't think that there's a rush to get it completed before the end of the fiscal year in that sense.
Okay, so maybe, maybe Q1 of the next fiscal year, maybe sometime next next July, August, September, where we'd be, maybe want to see something back, because that is that doable, Brandy and Brandon?
Yes, I believe, I believe so, based on the information that we have now. But we'll, you know, obviously, things will unfold and we will, we will make that our target and we'll come back with a, with a plan with that in mind.
Okay.
Now we have to hire Brandon to stick around the entire process.
Oh, he's not leaving.
Well, I, I think that that, I think we have enough information to move forward for now, unless there's any other comments. But thank you so much for, for hearing our presentation and we're very excited to start this process and see it move forward.
Okay, any other comments from council?
Thank you to Brandy and Brandon.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed, ditto. That's a lot of work and a lot of detail.
Okay, if there's no other comments, then we will move on. And that next item is item 10, ERP Finance Module. Is this Jeremy?
Jeremy and Cindy, Cindy primarily. So we wanted to take an opportunity, this was also council direction, but take this time just to share with you, with you some of our first impressions of the, the new ERP that we've been using, the Open Gov module. As you know, we've used Open Gov to develop our budget the last couple of years. And then this is the first year that we've used Open Gov to actually, actually share the budget and have the budget. And now Cindy's beginning to replace Fund Balance with, with this system. And this was sort of an informal kind of free flow, just share some high level thoughts initially. So Cindy, since you've been sitting in the system for almost a quarter now, you want to share some of your initial impressions?
Definitely. With the Open Gov system, we do, I, I have noticed quite a few improvements in the capabilities with this new system versus the options and capabilities that we've had with Fund Balance. So with the Open Gov system, we do have the option to create a specific reporting mechanisms, which we can use internally within staff and as well push that information out to the, the public facing system, the Open Gov transparency tool, to be able to use that data and build various different types of reports, a majority of which would be financial data, but also information that would be translated to non-financial data. So we would be able to provide reporting on water consumption, solicitation permits, various different types of data that we'd be able to push out to the public. They would, there will also be capabilities within the system to look at transactional data, make comparisons year over year. So those would all be options that would be available through the transparency tool. Within the financial system, we do, we will be increasing efficiencies internally as well with our, our AP system, increasing the, the use and having the options to view and scan and have invoices available within the system without actually having to go to our paper files any longer. We'll have all of those options within the cloud at our fingertips. And especially in this, this climate that we're in right now with COVID, it has, it's, it's been a great tool to have those capabilities. We are still working on some reporting mechanisms as well, also internally and, and getting the right reporting mechanisms in place to really display the information that we're looking for, that we can use and, and really give us all the data that we're, that we're looking for. But we are moving in in a right direction. Open Gov has been great in deploying their team to us. We are the early adopters, the very first municipality in, in California to be using the financial systems within Open Gov. So we are, are, are partners within Open Gov to build this system and really give them the feedback that they're looking for in order to build a solid product and and make it work for us.
Yeah, we're pretty delighted with it. It's, you know, I think the next step for us is we, you know, finalize the feel and look of the, of the department, Finance Department with a, with a potentially a full-time position to replace Cindy. You know, really just capturing some of those efficiencies that that we're already starting to see. I, I'm really pretty delighted with the ability to give staff some of the reporting that's just really hard to do out of, out of Fund Balance right now on, you know, where things are, I think particularly for, for Howard in Public Works. He, it's really important for him to keep track of his contracts and, and where things stand. And this is, the Fund Balance just never really did that for us. So we're able to do that now. So we're really happy. We really, you know, in the end, wanted just to extend our appreciation to the council for authorizing this expenditure, because it's really, it, it made a difference this summer. I cannot imagine having to do this budget with, with Fund Balance again. So thank you.
Okay, are there questions or? Okay, public comment? Okay. That was just, that was just a study session, right? That was just a quick update.
Just an update, the council had requested this when we purchased the system.
Okay, thanks. Oh, Anne, go ahead.
Just, just one quick thing, and and this is something that I should have probably asked earlier, sorry. But first of all, thank you both for all the work on it. And I think one question I might have is, is that as you're getting into the next stage, where you're starting to customize some of the reporting, does it make sense to potentially even have not just somebody from our side or, but the Finance Committee perhaps, or a representative from the Finance Committee and maybe even a resident, somebody who's going to be just coming in to so, to give some input on what they would find most useful, since I know we're going to have a lot more, you know, transparency associated with it. And I'm just thinking that perhaps some other input might be useful along the way. And to take that under advisement, but I think it might be a good time to, if there are folks that are interested and wanted to participate with you, that, that might be an interesting opportunity.
That, that's a great idea. We, we'd hoped as we, you're speaking specifically to the, the Budget Transparency Tool and being able to really provide residents with the kinds of things that they want to see. And obviously, there's things we can do in real time related to the accounting part as well. But the budget part, yes, happy to engage in that way.
Any other questions or comments on, on the ERP? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 11, the Extension of the Local Emergency Declaration. Jeremy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Alst, and members of the council. This is the fourth time that we have brought this item forward to you. This is a, an extension of the existing local emergency through a period to the council meeting in December. We would have done this a little bit earlier, but there are some cancellations of council, particularly around Thanksgiving, that we thought that made the most sense. There are no changes. So this is simply an authorization to extend it to the period of time that's stated within the staff report. Certainly, you know, we're, we're hopeful that as the county yesterday popped into the red zone and hopefully we're on the right track and this won't be necessary much longer, but having the flexibility has certainly helped as we've been responding to COVID issues. So with that, Carl and I would be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anne, go ahead.
Just one question, does it automatically expire if we move into the green zone?
No, the local emergency resolution that you adopted does not automatically expire.
So we would have to reconvene to, if it, if we've, you know, miraculously jumped to the green in three weeks. Okay.
There is no green zone. The four tiers, the, the bottom tier is yellow, which is that there is still COVID out there. It's just transmitting at a minimal, minimal level.
Okay, the, the lowest level of transmission. So, but she answered the question, thank you.
Craig, go ahead.
Could you remind us, please, Cara, that I know there's a limit to the maximum amount of time that we can extend for? Is it every, I, I thought, I mean, the last, the last couple we've done, I thought we extended for 60 days. Is the limit 90?
You can extend it for as long as you want. There actually is no limit. However, if your resolution says that you will terminate the emergency, you know, once it's, once the emergency has, has gone away. So then we would have to reconvene the body to, you know, formally rescind the resolution essentially.
I see, I, I thought we, we, the reason that we were doing this sort of 60 days at a time approach was because there was a statutory maximum after which we have to revisit and reauthorize it.
No, that's, that's not the case. For, for your particular structure, some cities do have 60 day limits, but you don't have that in your code.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Cara or Jeremy? Okay, any public comment? Rita, go ahead.
I just want to make a comment about the Planning Commission that has not met since January. And at first, the excuses were because of COVID-19. And now it, I guess it's understood that there's no reason to meet. But earlier in talking about the budget, there seems to be contractors and other expenses and lots of permits and whatnot. Ken, you know, is it because of COVID that there's no meeting or will there be a meeting soon? This, this little portion here just reminded me of the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Jeremy, do you want to answer that one?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. In the email that I respond, you asked this question, read it in email to me and I've responded, nothing's changed. I think we spoke a week ago. The Planning Commission did initially not meet. No, there were no meetings for commissions and committees for a period of time. The Planning Commission sees a specific set of issues that, given now that we're back operating our planning and building department fully, some of those issues tend to go to AACC first or only go to AACC. We haven't seen the issues that typically go to Planning Commission go there yet. We are planning a Planning Commission meeting next month, because there are now issues that have percolated up to that need. So that's going to be happening. Sorry, my email wasn't clear if that was the case.
Well, I was just thinking that perhaps there was an update, because there seemed to be, you had mentioned earlier, so many permits. And I just know when I was building my home, that I had a couple of meetings and I thought other people then would probably need those meetings also.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other public comment, I could take a motion on this or we could discuss. I would move approval. Okay. Okay, moved by Craig, seconded by Mary Ann. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Member Wenger?
Aye.
Councilmember Richards?
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Derwin?
Aye.
Mayor Alst?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, before we come to the next item, Cara reminded me via text here that there was an item, the Consent Agenda, that item six, that was related to the creation of the Subcommittee, that we actually didn't. pick the members of the subcommittee, although the council may have assumed that the two writers of the colleagues memo were going to be those members. But we just wanted to confirm that that was the council's direction.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't think of that.
Oh, no, no, that's on us. We should have caught it.
Okay, so just so everyone's clear, in item six on consent was a consent agenda sort of suggesting we create a subcommittee. The I I assumed that the you would you would agree that Craig and I would be the members of that subcommittee, but I'd be happy to hear any discussion of that. Is that is that okay with everyone?
Fine with me.
Okay, do we need to do we need to vote on that, Cara, or do we just? Okay, so if someone wants to make a motion, we can vote.
I can nominate Jeff and Craig to be the subcommittee of PG&E.
I second that.
Okay, Sharon, roll call vote, please.
House member Wenger.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Let's remember Hughes.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Derwin.
Hi.
Mayor Als.
Hi. Okay, thank you. Item 12 is liaison reports. Do you want to start?
Yes, very short, only one meeting. I was not able to attend the finance committee committee meeting, but I understand it was well run and relatively short. And the only other meeting I had was the San Francisco Roundtable Budget Review. That was on the 16th. And I think the most exciting part of that is that there was one member of the roundtable that hasn't paid for three years. I won't identify who that is. It might have something to do with the location of the airport, just as a hint. So there is, there's going to be a big push to remedy that, I think, shortly. And otherwise, the fees will stay the same for all the member cities and probably the biggest issue to be dealt with shortly will be the Palo inclusion or not of Palo Alto and others who may request to become part of the round table. So that's all I have.
John, go ahead.
I just had one conservation committee meeting, which you've heard Vermont tonight. Let's see, the major issues, there was a spirited presentation of milkweed and monarch butterfly effort being put out by Rebecca Schostack and Alex Kowadja on the conservation committee. And they're doing a big buy of of milkweed this weekend. So that's a nice feel good thing going on. And then there was some discussion about Detrickia, the non-native invasive that has sort of started to take over the town here and there. And apparently, there are some parcels that are especially bad. There's one on Westridge that was brought up. Apparently, there's a a piece of property that was purchased, the home was torn down, and then it was sold as a lot, I guess. And it's currently host to a spectacular community of Detrickia. And we after discussing it all, we decided that the best bet would be to start with approaching the WASC, the Westridge, Westridge Committee, and ask them to talk to the homeowner and or the landowner and start from that. This is something that seems to be coming up more and more often with projects that have been either completed or underway. And during the chaos of construction, people forget about that. Note the side note in the conservation committee approval saying, please get rid of this or that. That plant that's invasive before it blows into the neighbor's yard. So that's hopefully going to be an issue that's improved with WASC taking care of it on this case, but it may be something we need to address a little more formally in some manner. Let's see, then there's was discussion of the front pond, they several members of the committee and some members of the community went out and and did a biological review of this of the plant species and that are out there now and found, I think they said 50 species, most of them being natives. At least in in the varieties, quite a few more non-natives plants than native plants, but they're working towards making a sort of an updated review of that that space so they can feel figure out how to attack the non-natives and revive this the front pond as we go forward. Hopefully, as mentioned earlier, we can get that the survey and stuff wrapped up so we'll get the that moving on a more more even course. So that was that.
Okay, I saw so Rita Combs commented on the chat box that the milkweed distribution is October 3, which is, I guess, not this Saturday, but the week after. Thanks for that correction. Mary, I saw your hand up. I'm guessing maybe you were going to make that same correction. If it's something else, feel free to raise your hand again. I just was waiting for John to finish his report. But but thank you for the update on that. Okay, Craig, go ahead.
Yeah, I had two ASEC meeting, which was a nice little simple one. A new two car attached garage and art studio above at Portola Green Circle, which was approved. And then the other one was the finance committee meeting, the major topic of which was the budget that we just saw ourselves. And that meeting also included Bill Urban announcing that he's going to be stepping down from that committee after 30 something years of service, I think, a long, long time on that committee. He's, you know, chartered and been a, I think, driving force behind some of the some of the major changes that have originated in that committee that have percolated through and I think helped the town out greatly. So just wanted to recognize Bill Urban for all the work that he's done over the years on that committee, and will be sad to see him go. Those were my meetings.
Okay, thank you. Mary Ann.
I have five. Okay, the first one's your favorite, CCA. We had a presentation and update on the express lane project, and we had a presentation on San Mateo County's COVID-19 recovery efforts by Peggy Jensen, which I think we've also seen in the county call. This meeting was on September 10, so this is always old news. But the legislature ended August 31 at midnight. There was a COVID case among the Republicans. So they had to move to virtual meetings, and there were all kinds of issues with procedures. And that's one reason that they had so many delays. And so many bills just didn't make it. There were 400 bills that they were looking at. And of course, they didn't all make it. Let's see, now AB 725 by Wix went to the governor. I don't know. Do you know if he signed it yet, Jeremy? That's the one where 25% of your above moderate income housing has to be allotted to sites that can allow at least four units.
I don't believe he signed it yet, no.
Okay. And then there's one called.
Giddy Cara.
Yeah, I, yes, he did sign it, but it's not applicable to Portola Valley because of our size.
SB 1044 about has to do with firefighting foam and equipment and addressing the chemicals in the firefighting boom by January 2022, and CCA supported that. We're also supporting AB 841 by Ting, which is energy efficiency upgrades, especially at schools. What else? Then we had a presentation on the update of the bicycle and pedestrian program and the comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian program. That's the same thing. I don't know why I said that twice. What else did we talk about? One of our board members, Gina Pappan, who is our representative to MTC board, said that the letter that they tried to get express lanes to sign, I guess, a couple of months ago, that we did not sign as written, we personalized it. Was a very good thing. And apparently, we have inspired other places to edit the letter so that it is applicable to their counties as well. And Carol Motzamoto said it's critical that we support Measure RR if we want Caltrain to keep running. JPA Express Lanes, we had an equity study presentation that I thought was really pretty interesting. I just want here, I just wanted to note some of their key findings. And again, you know what the express lanes are. Those are lanes where you can pay to drive in them. Or if you have a certain number of people, it hasn't been determined yet. In your car, you can ride for free or discount it, or of course, if you're in a bus. So the summary of key findings is that congestion pricing works. And congestion pricing means certain times of the day, it's going to be a lot more expensive when, you know, during commute times. Congestion pricing works. It reduces congestion and air pollution. Congestion pricing is also considered more equitable. It also creates fewer equity concerns than other pricing schemes for freeway lanes. It's slightly less regressive than other transportation financing. The revenue redistribution is key to outcomes. In other words, if you put the revenue back into the the communities by the corridor, it makes sense. It's difficult to generate enough net revenue to fully fund the projects. It can have negative environmental justice impacts if the highways expanded for a new lane. The direct benefits accrue to higher income groups more than others. The acceptability after implementation is widespread across all groups. And the low income drivers are a small share of the peak period traffic and much less likely to pay the highest tolls. They are only 5% of the drivers. And then there were some case studies. And then they talked about the public engagement plan. And I believe we are the only ones or the first ones to do this. This study, we're doing it through a group called ARUP. And the senior planner who is working with us grew up in La Honda in the 70s, and her parents were hippies. The finance, our finance guy Derek was very happy to say that we finally went to market the Wednesday, whenever that meeting was. And issued 100 million in bonds. They were sold in two tranches. 50 million marketed daily and 50 million marketed weekly. The cost of the JPA is just under 1%. That's our $100 million loan from the TA to the JPA. And let me see what else. Oh, the the, I forget what we call him. Maybe he's the policy manager. He told us that we'll be having a series of toll policy discussions in April, May, June, and July. A lot of the toll policy work is being done in conjunction with the equity work. Right, then I had a flood and sea level rise resiliency district meeting. Our CEO asked us if they could join the Association of California Water Agencies, that's ACWA, because they could get much better options for health insurance. They can also get life insurance, employee assistance, human resources, risk management. He was the ED at San Francisco Creek JPA, and they bought their insurance through Aqua. And that's where he learned that it was a good thing to do, and we chose to do that. Okay, Dave Pine, our chair, said that the Long Term Financing Committee met. And they're going to start talking to council members in the various cities to let everybody know what the district is up to. And they're also going to have a new electronic newsletter on October 1. And then Len Maderman, our CEO, gave an overview of all the projects, including a FEMA funding opportunity, the Bayfront Canal and the Atherton Channel, Belmont Creek and Colma Creek. I was glad to hear that Colma Creek, they've decided to take a more holistic look at it and transform it from a liability into an asset to look at more green infrastructure and incorporate recreation and connectivity such as bike, pad, you know, on, I'm not sure what, whether it's levees or whatever. They want to do trail access upstream. So this is exactly the kind of thing that I was hoping that this agency would do. And I think that's it. Let's see. Then there was a library JPA meeting on the 21st. We had a presentation by EMC Research on resident, the library patrons. They said that the results were very strong, in fact, among the strongest and best results they have ever seen. So people still like the old fashioned things like checking out books and access to downloadable materials. The only thing that they didn't think was that important was the checkout of bicycles, which you could only do at one library anyway. The, you know, and then there was a lot of statistics on who filled it out. You know, the heavy users are 30 to 49 years old who have kids, tend to be women. Let's see, even our job that we're doing for communities of color was very good, apparently, for a public agency. That was our lowest performing job rating at 77%. But the EMC research presenter said that was very high for public agency. Okay, what else? She gave Anne Marie Spain, who is library director, gave a sort of a recap on what's happening, their current opening status and their phased reopening. They've expanded the curbside service, their printing. I can't even read this. I think printing on demand is happening again, so you can send your stuff to the library, and then they'll put it out for you to pick up. They're doing 3D printing. And they're still recommending phase to the end of the year. There would not be any in person opening before January 2021. Extra hotspots are still important in a lot of places in the county. And what else? They're also working closely with the county on the AT stuff because the digital divide in some school districts is still wide. And they're also working with Quinte and Pesca Dero on this. Okay, then we had an item to advance funds to Atherton. As you know, Atherton, Portola Valley and Woodside are donor cities, which means we bring in more money than we spend. However, the policies changed, and when the Atherton Library is built, we will only keep 50% of what we bring in, and the other 50% will go to the library general general fund. But for now, it's the same system, and people are still accruing money. And Atherton Library asked for $5,391,725 in advance. So they've used up all their funds, and now they're they're trying to get money in advance, but they accrue a lot of money. They think they can pay it back by 23, 24, or maybe even earlier. We adopted our budget. There were some adjustments for COVID, but it wasn't too bad. Anne Marie told everybody that our author event with Professor Jennifer Everhart as of Monday was already oversubscribed. So if you have not signed up and you can't get through, let me know, and I'll see what I can do. The Brisbane Library is nearly complete. And I think that's it. Oh, we had a closed session, performance review for Anne Marie. And the event is on Tuesday, September 30, at 6:00. performance review from Anne Marie. And the event is on Tuesday, September 30 at 6:30 PM. And my last report is the Sustainability Committee. This will be the first time that we, we met since February, so it was really nice to see everybody, even if it was only virtual. And we're down to, I think, only five members. Lovey Taylor is an incredible reader and she reads all the climate books, no matter how dry and dull. And she wants to start a book group, which we thought was a great idea because with Zoom, book groups are not that hard to do. So I'm going to help her to narrow her list down to five. And since I am not a scientist and I actually have pretty lowbrow taste, for example, I love The Real Housewives of New York. I think that I'm the perfect person to look at these books to decide what people will want to read. Brandy updated us on the leaf blower incentive and PCE's battery backup rebate and smart water meter, which is no news. And then two people, no, Rebecca had two more cow water complaints about leaks. And then we discussed devices you can get yourself, such as Flume, which I bought and installed on my water meter and it's not hard to do. It, you put it on the water meter, you strap it on and then it communicates with this little guy. And it tells your phone when you have a leak. So there was some discussion of, well, maybe people should just do that since the smart meters are never going to happen. Cleanup Day, October 3rd, and the, one of the Green Waste Principals was there, Kevin Martinez. So they broke, we broke people down into groups. We've got Rebecca and Brandy working on smart meter alternatives. We've got Stefan and I don't know who else, somebody else, working on battery backup options. And Stefan had a lot of ideas about that. And, oh, Stefan and Walt are going to work on that. And there is, SunShares is going to be doing a group buy soon for solar and battery, if anyone's interested in doing that. Then we got our update on CAP, which you've already heard about, and that is it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Christie's got her hand up. Did you have a comment there, Christie? You may have to unmute.
Yeah, you may need to unmute.
Christie?
Here we go. There we go. Yeah, I'm wondering if the council as a group wrote Gavin Newsom to support any bills and if so, which ones?
To my knowledge, we did not. Jeremy, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't recall this year that there were bills that were authored by the council and signed by the mayor, not this year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I didn't have any town meetings. PCE has announced a couple of initiatives. We're offering $150 to every small business account in San Mateo County as a COVID rebate, a little incentive. And then we also just announced our $28 million EV infrastructure funding program, which is, has a couple of FOCI. One is sort of high-speed charging in certain locations and the other is chargers in multifamily dwelling units. We'll be looking for basically property owners or, or businesses that want to install one of those two, either, either fast chargers or slower chargers in sort of apartment buildings or condo buildings because that's a, there's a, well, there are two major sort of gaps in infrastructure that are hampering the adoption of more EVs. And so that's something that PCE is trying to help bridge that gap. I didn't know about the SunShares program, but I'll just remind people that Sunrun is still doing their battery backup program. I'm, I'm still trying to get a final drawing from them for my project, but they are offering battery backups that would become part of PCE's resource adequacy program. I guess that's about it. PCE is operating, we're probably going to run a slight loss this year, partly because of, partly because of COVID, but also because the exit fee, the, the PCIA, which is the fee we pay, we all individually pay to PG&E for exiting with, as a CCA, has gone up, well, is going to go up markedly this fall because of, it's just, it's an accounting mechanism where the, the, all the investor on utilities get to collect money they weren't able to collect before. There's a couple of years here where we're probably going to have these very steep, we're all going to be paying a steep PCIA charge, which limits what PCE can charge you for, for generation, because we're always trying to keep our generation rates 5% below PG&E's generation rates. But we also have $180 million reserve, which we built up kind of for this reason. So we're in very solid financial ground and I'm hoping we will continue offering all the programs we're doing, but I guess that's about it for me. So move on to digests. Anyone want to pull anything from, oh, sorry, Jeremy's report. Go ahead, Jeremy.
Dave Carden also, yes, first, then Dave Carden.
So I actually just want to announce one thing. On next Wednesday, September 30th at 7:00 PM, the town has invited PG&E to a public meeting. We've asked them to present their plans on keeping the town safe related to vegetation management and upkeep of their infrastructure and maintenance. So we invite all residents to attend. That information was sent out today to all those who subscribe to News. It was put on the forum and Nextdoor, so I hope you all come. Probably about 45 minutes of presentation and then about 45 minutes of questions. We'll be taking questions live there. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, just one more brief item that I wanted to bring up, and that was Mary Ann and Jeremy and Brandon and I spoke briefly about potentially doing a land acknowledgement, looking into the possibility of doing a land acknowledgement. And Brandon is going to contact some people in the local tribes and find out what type of options there might be, what they might be interested in, if they wanted to have any kind of a partnership with us or whatever, see what, what the options are. So it's an interesting thing that was brought up by the, by Kim Ackert at our last meeting. So just wanted to bring that up. That was it.
Yeah, I just, that Brandon has an experience both as a Native American and also through their experience at Stanford University, working on these issues with a professor. So bringing that experience and connection is important to us and they'll be having updates for us in the future on this, unless you've got something you want to share now, Brandon.
Um, I guess I can detail a little bit about it. I already spoke with Mary Ann and Jeff about this, but I guess to kind of elaborate on my thinking behind everything, for those of you that are, is anybody unfamiliar with the land acknowledgement process or what a land acknowledgement is?
You should probably explain.
Okay, yeah. So for those unfamiliar, a land acknowledgement is basically a formal statement that recognizes the fact that we both dwell on and benefit from ancestral lands taken from indigenous peoples. Furthermore, it recognizes indigenous peoples as traditional stewards of the land and recognizes their enduring, the enduring relationship that tribes have, both practically and spiritually, to their ancestral territories. This is usually done through the adoption of a formal statement, as well as a short piece that is said before public addresses. However, I guess in my own thinking of it, kind of much like putting out town statements on other complex issues or using hashtags, these statements don't mean as much without direct policy action and collaborations to back them up. So Portola Valley primarily sits on the ancestral home of the Alone peoples, particularly the Remaitush and Muakma tribes. And so I kind of thought that Portola Valley had a bit of a unique opportunity to build a long-term relationship with tribal leaders in a collaborative way. I think that tribal collaboration doesn't just honor a tribe's relationship to the land, but also opens doors for cultural and historical preservation, especially in term, in terms of the Remaitush and Muakma tribes. They tend to place a lot of their focus on cultural preservation and different social initiatives to try and reach out to native families and youth. Kind of as an example of a collaboration, Stanford has a really long relationship with the Muakma-Alone tribe and has worked with them to remove statues or rename buildings dedicated to those who have contributed to genocide or cultural eraser of indigenous people. They also host an annual powwow for the larger indigenous community in the Bay Area. Kind of as such, earlier this week, I reached out to tribal leaders in both the Muakma and Remaitush tribes to ask how they would envision collaboration between their elders in the town and I guess what they would be interested in working together to try and commit. Yeah, and that's kind of currently where the project is. I'm mostly waiting to hear back from them and see what they might be interested in.
Thank you, Brandon. I should also question, since Brandon's here, Craig briefly interjected this into one of his comments. We're working together, although Brandon's doing the hard work, I'm merely directing, creating a reconstituted team committee. And those conversations so far have gone really well. Our thinking on the success of a team committee will come primarily around making sure it's sustainable and it actually continues beyond what has typically been an excited parent who wants to do something for their kid. So Brandon's been, Brandon and I've been reaching out to the school district, to the priory, the library. And we also had a conversation with Jeff about some of his thoughts and Brandon's prepared some really good materials that we hope to bring to the council in the coming months, once we finalize the relationship with the, with the other entities. But so far, so good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions on the town manager report, we can move on to digests. September 11th, anyone have any comments on that one? Sounds like we covered most of them. September 18th, I'm just curious, is anybody thinking of writing a letter for legalized?
Oh, did you guys get the mailer, the glossy brochure, four-page glossy brochure? That was one of the most entertaining reads I've had in a while.
It was really good.
Don't you all want ferret stuff?
I didn't realize they were illegal.
Why are they illegal? I don't understand. Anybody know?
Because they were made illegal a long time ago and nobody has the motivation.
There's no ferret fan club.
You had a law passed through the legislature and by the governor to get the status change.
Very strange.
Yeah. Okay, anything else to pull from the 18th? If not, then I believe we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Everyone, have a good night.
You too.